Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Education Committee meeting for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Recommend.
Ms. Mills.
Can you hear me back there? The mic's on. What's wrong with it? The mics aren't on? I'm gonna sing a few bars? No. Okay, we're better. Okay, we've called to order the Education Committee meeting. First subject, object of business is the approval of the minutes. Recommended action, approval of August ninth, twenty twenty-two, Education Committee meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
And yes. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is the Music Curriculum Plan, and Gabrielle Hughes.
It's Gabe Hughes and April Mullen. I'm gonna join them.
Gabe Hughes and?
April Mullen.
April Mullen. Nice to see you both here. Thank you for coming.
So, thank you, Board of School Directors, community members, and staff that's with us this evening. You know, as a school district, we're always talking about how proud we are, right? The pride within Coatesville area school district. And one of the reasons we have that pride is the different programs that we offer within the district. From our sports teams to the clubs and activities, but specifically our music program. That's something that's been a strong aspect of the school district for many, many years. Recently, we unfortunately have seen a decline in enrollment in our classes specifically at the secondary level, and a small decline in enrollment in our elementary orchestra and band. This evening, we just wanna talk a little bit about the plans that we have to help increase participation in this program. Again, this is something that has been a strong aspect of the school district for many years, and something that everyone has had a lot of pride in. Mr. Hughes has been with us for many years, won many awards and competitions as a band director, something again that has brought a lot of attention, positive feedback for the district. This evening, Rob, can we pull up that presentation? We're gonna just take a few minutes to talk about what our goals are for this upcoming year and future years to increase participation within the music program. Now, we understand that not everything we wanna do is going to be a slam dunk, because at times there are costs. There is cost to increasing participation and things like that, but we wanna present some of our thoughts and goals for the upcoming school year, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, illustrious members of the school board. It's wonderful to be in front of you again, and I would like to thank you very much for giving us the time to speak to you. As Mr. Pleya did say, we have seen some decline in our music program, but fear not. You have strong, resilient teachers here that are willing to put in the work and do what's gonna take to make this happen. So, we'd like to present to you a plan that we have been working on as a full department over the summer to set up for you how we wanna do this. This is a three-year plan that we're beginning with, with a check-in at the end to talk about future plans. Could you go ahead and hit the button for me? I think, oh, look at it go. There we go, right. So, what we'd like to do is we'd like to work on communication, all right? Some of the things that we've seen as issues is communication between both the teachers, the students, the parents, just getting everybody all on the same page. We have different teachers, we have different administrators, everything has kind of gone a little bit awry. We're bringing it back. We're gonna go ahead and make sure that we get our streamlined course selection process. This course selection process is excellent, but only if everybody knows what's going on at the same time. In the past, we used to have a very strong communication from school to school to make sure that students that did not sign up for classes, we were able to hunt them down and find out, hey, what's going on? Why don't you play your saxophone? What's going on? And it was a real easy and fun way for us to kinda connect with kids that we didn't know. I could say, hey, listen, I was told that Ms. Mangy said you played saxophone. What's up? And then now I have this kid in my pocket, oh, you think I care about him? We're moving on. And then I can go and bring him in, love him, bring him in the band, and we keep working. So, that kinda thing doesn't happen at the moment, just because we're all not on the same page. We also wanna set up some assemblies for recruitment before scheduling happens. Typically, our recruiting assemblies happen at the, I believe, the beginning of the school year for the elementary's new students, and then kind of throughout the different times of the year, we'll do things, but we wanna streamline and make it a little bit easier so everyone is on the same page, and we all get it before scheduling time. I wanna make sure that all the students understand their various opportunities, so that way they can go ahead and make good choices when they go to move up to the higher grades. One thing that's excellent from our elementary and middle school teachers is they're great at helping us to know what their skills and strengths are, so we can go and suggest proper class structure for the next year. It's a lot easier for the administration and the guidance counselors if they choose the correct class from the beginning and don't have to fix it in October. So, it makes it real easy if we all can kinda be on the same page with that. We'd also like to obtain class lists of participants from prior years, and also include more participation in community events where the kids are gonna see what their opportunities are, and the community knows what their opportunities are. Anybody in Coatesville knows a Meister Singer, all right? That's a top choir, that's the concert to go to, you better have your tickets. So, we want everybody to know, hey, East Fallowfield does this, hey, North Brandywine does that, oh, I saw you at the tree lighting, that kinda thing, so that way the kids can see before they get here, this is what I have to aspire to, and they can make choices that make sense. We also wanna start looking at some new course offerings. We need to make sure we're doing things that the kids are interested in. I love the fact that, you know, people enjoy different kinds of music and things, but we need to know what they want and how we can adjust our curriculum to draw them in and keep them here. We used to have a general music class, and the way that we kept the kids in general music class was we went, we changed up what we did, and we adjusted with the times to work with it. We need to do that with our current classes as well, so we want to go and survey their interests now, this year, so that way in the future, we can go and start the process of getting a course done. Now, Dr. Dunlap went through a very lengthy process of explaining how that works, and goodness, we need to get started immediately, so we're gonna work on that this year, so that way by next October, we'll have some information for you. Hopefully, we'll be sitting here in a room talking about some great new course offerings. In the second year of our plan, we're gonna continue to work with our administration to increase weight values for classes, something that a lot of our students, and I actually went and sat down and asked a few of my students, if they had an opportunity to take a music class for an equal weight to an honors class, would they take it instead of the honors class? They said, yes, I'm not trying to jack up my GPA, I'm not gonna incriminate a child, but they are very GPA-conscious. So, if they wanna go and have the best offerings for what they do when they go to college, the best GPA, the best extracurriculars and all that kinda thing, we should be giving credit for when they are going above and beyond. A Meister Singer, the amount of work they put in is definitely honors-level work. Anybody who has ever been, ask Rita Tingle Lewis, she'll tell you, that is honors-level credit, but we don't have that in yet. So, we wanna go and look at the different courses and give some insight and some facts to why, hey, a twelfth grader in band should have more credit than an eighth grader in band, so that way we can go and get the kids continuing taking those higher-level courses and not just skipping out to something else because it has a higher credit value. We wanna go and also level some classes by skill. Right now, we currently have a lot of classes at the high school that are eighth through twelfth grade in the same room. Now, I don't know any other class that has eighth graders and twelfth graders in the same room, and as much as the miracles we can make happen in the room are, we do need a little bit of leveling if we're gonna be able to help do the best we can. If a brand-new kid comes to me in eighth grade and says, hey, I've always wanted to play the trumpet, and I've got seventy kids in this room, I can't spend the time that I need with that one student with seventy kids in that room all the way. So, we wanna go and incorporate this leveling process to make sure that students who want to start new and students who are even already in can get what they need. If they don't get what they need, they're going to leave, they're gonna find something else to do. When I was a kid, I played baseball. I was awful. I learned that I was not getting what I needed, I went and picked up the clarinet. Hey, look at me now, all right? So, this is what they're gonna do. If they don't get what they need and they don't see what they need, they're not gonna stay in our classes. So, we wanna make sure that they have what they need. We're going to look at some different beginning instrumental course offerings for the middle school. The same kinda thing is working out for them, but it's a little bit more crucial because at the younger age, they haven't had as much in terms of the training and things on how to practice, how to do things, how to kinda get their study skills and stuff together, so they're gonna need more time. So, they will need a separate class that will be able to do beginning band or beginning orchestra or beginning choir, to kinda give them those skills that they're missing when they come to that spot. We're also gonna go and try and do more recruitment events for things. We've talked about anyone who's been around long enough, Prelude to Spring, one of the coolest concerts I ever was a part of. We kinda let it go off for a little bit, but I'd like to try and see about bringing something like that back. Now, for those of you who do not know, Prelude to Spring was where we took every single kid who played a band instrument from fifth grade, uh, fourth grade, fifth grade, fifth grade, yeah, fifth grade, second years, fifth grade all the way up through twelfth grade, and we all played together. We all played for each other, and then at the end, we all played a song together. That was one of the coolest things that ever happened, and my first year participating in that, my numbers doubled, just from the fact that I went and brought my percussion ensemble to go and play for them. And they said, oh, wow, I went from thirteen to twenty-six. All right, so, that kinda information and that kinda stuff is good for them, all right? The other thing is based on our survey results, we wanna work on that process of creating those new courses that people wanna do, all right? We wanna make sure that they have all those opportunities to catch everyone, not just band, chorus, and orchestra, but hey, maybe you're the kid that makes the beats, that sells them, you know, and is gonna be the next Timbaland or whatever, you know, that kinda thing. We wanna be able to accommodate those students as well. If we give these course offerings and these things here, that's a draw to our programs and a draw to our district. We're all in this together, all right? Okay, we'll, oh, go ahead.
You don't talk about third, adding third grade.
Oh, a third grade, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped on, my bad, I can't read. In the elementary school, we did wanna offer the third-grade strings and third-grade chorus. In the past, we actually have done this, and it was really good for our orchestra program due to, I'm assuming scheduling and some other things, that is something that's gone away, but because of the bolstering that that did to the program before, we'd like to see that come back. Chorus is something that everyone can participate in, you were given a voice, and we want you to use it, so that one's easy and good for everybody to get, even with low monetary necessity for it. Anything, I miss anything else? See, this is why she's here, she's got my back. I appreciate you. All right, last year of our plan, we wanna offer those new course offerings that we got, try and get middle school general music back. Something that was really important to us was the fact that the students got music all the way through eighth grade. Getting music all the way through eighth grade, even if you weren't performing, meant that you were gaining new skills, you were learning new things, and sometimes those kids were be able to be plucked out of the general music curriculum and into the high school courses. So, that would mean the things like our AP Theory class that doesn't run right now because we don't have enough interest, things like our handbells, things like our general, we actually had a general music class here. I mean, there are a lot of different course offerings and things that are on the course schedule, but we don't run them just because there's not enough interest. Having that additional time in music guaranteed for the middle school students would help with our high school numbers. We also wanna reevaluate recruitment efforts and kinda look towards a new plan in three years. So, the idea is at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as I said, once again, I wanna be in front of you a lot, I want us to be best friends right here, and I wanna go and sit there and say, hey, here's all the successes we had, hey, here's the things we need, here's what we need to do, and kinda come up with a new plan so we can continue this process. It's not gonna be three years and up, wash your hands, you're done with it. We have to invest in this forever if we want it to stay, so that's what we're gonna do. The last piece that I'm gonna say to you is, in order for this stuff to happen, I know it doesn't just pop out of thin air, we are not genies, we cannot make it happen like that, we're gonna need three things, and these are three things that I was taught way back in the day, make a beautiful triangle, time, talent, and treasure. Now, what we are gonna ask from you may be one, maybe two, maybe three, but we know that those things are what we need, and as your professionals, we want to go and make sure that we come to you with the best information to say, hey, listen, I need more lesson time because I have seven kids that can't play a trumpet right now. I want to be able to have that conversation with you and to be able to reevaluate with you multiple times. Hey, we need another teacher because the schedule's too tight, we can't get everybody in, this kid keeps missing their stuff because they have lunch. We wanna go through and give you this information and have that conversation about those three pieces, so that way we can make this happen. As I said, we all know that the students are important to us. We all know that the teachers here, everybody is gonna work hard for it. We just need to go and get our data together, get our information, and work it so that way we can be a team together. Is there anything else that I missed? Was there something you'd like to hop in and say, slide to the side, think I said it? Okay, listen, we're not gonna waste no time, 'cause y'all got a lot to do, but I do wanna say thank you very much for everything you've done, and if you will please continue to look forward to seeing us, and we will be inviting you to a lot of events coming soon, so please keep a lookout for that, all right? Thank you very kindly, and have a blessed and prosperous evening.
Well, we look forward to the invitations.
Oh, yes.
And we look forward of accompanying you on this journey for what you want to do with music, and I think it's great. Music's in the soul. I played the tenor saxophone.
As you should.
In the marching band, so if you're short on a tenor saxophone player, look, look at that look.
Don't offer it to your own girl. I will invite you to the class. Mr. Fisher knows.
We'd be better with bells, right? Well, thank you very much for that.
Ms. Mills.
Any other points and questions?
We have some invitations to, for bucket drumming. You guys have threw some bucket drums last year, free spell, so you guys are free to come and bucket drumming.
Oh, cool, that's a good one. Go ahead.
Ms. Mills, if I may, can you hear me? My mic on? Yeah, is it turned? No, I don't think it's turned on.
Gotta love technology.
Well, anyway, Mr. Hughes.
Yes, sir.
Your enthusiasm never wavers.
Nah, can't.
You're the best, my friend, you're the best. But a quick question, because honestly, I don't know, I know what goes on at the secondary level, but, so maybe better question for you. When are children eligible to be a part of the elementary chorus and/or band?
We start in fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
Band, orchestra, and chorus.
Okay, and I missed chorus. I missed orchestra. So, how do you go about that? A child comes in the fourth grade, do you meet with each of the classes and pump it up, or?
I mean, the last couple weeks, we've been doing a lot of recruitment. I know Eddie Salvo, and actually, I think Mr. Rakin has at almost every level at every school he's at this year, done some recruitment assemblies, where he actually picks up each instrument and shows the kids, these are your options, this is what you can play this year, and then we send home forms, and they return the forms. And same with chorus, you know, during music class, I've been doing a lot of recruitment and saying, hey, you guys are the champions of the chorus this year, we've sent home forms, and the students sign up.
So, if you spark my interest, and I play the clarinet, and I decide I wanna be a part of the band, do you have lessons with the students during the school day?
Yeah, they get a thirty to forty-minute lesson once every sixties in small groups, three to four kids.
Okay, and they're actually pulled from their?
Yeah.
Regular classes?
Yeah.
Okay. If I'm a child that doesn't have an instrument, how do we handle that?
The most of them you rent, but we can have a small stock of school-owned instruments that we can lend out to students. I know Mrs. Simmons last year did a whole lot of work with Master Funds in getting, making sure that we had some school-owned instruments available to students.
There's an education foundation that has you on our radar, so hopefully, we can help you with. Hopefully, we can help you with that. Yeah. All right, thank you.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Thanks for the presentation, and I will vouch for the fourth grader because somebody convinced my son to play the loudest instrument in the band.
What's that? What's he playing?
Drums.
[laughing]
He gets it honestly, but going back to the, so you talked about the three-year evaluation, is there any benchmarking in between years one and three? So, like year two, are we kinda like, we need to pivot 'cause something's not working, or this is exploding, and we have to pivot and do, or, so my, I guess, simple part of my question is, are we waiting till the third year to, okay?
No, 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 no.
We'll be constantly looking at those numbers and seeing that what we can, we constantly do.
But, but I mean, coming back here with that information.
Well, here's what I'm gonna say, I plan to be back here again, at least this time next year, if not sooner, to go and tell you about all the great things we've done. But, I will also say that Mr. Pleya and Dr. Dunlap, I apologize, have both been very vocal about the inclusive with, I'm getting lost in my words, to back that up, have been very, have been very open about speaking to us, all right? I'm sorry for the people at home, my bad, it's my fault. Have been very open about speaking with us and continuing to work with us in check-ins throughout the year. So, it's not gonna be a thing where we don't, if we're not seeing you, we're not checking in, we're not making moves, we're not doing things. As I said, we're gonna start here with the teachers, we're gonna move to the administration, and we will also be back with you to kind of give you an update on what's going on and to work through how things are working, and even if things do need to change, or we need something, or whatever's going on, we will let you know, we'll keep you in the loop.
Thanks.
I just have a comment, not necessarily a question. Very enthusiastic presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Given that enthusiasm, I have the utmost confidence that this program's gonna start to build. The level, what you put into it's what you get out of it, so I can appreciate your enthusiasm, your dedication.
And I'm the calmest one.
So, that being said, I think oftentimes, what gets lost in translation is the amount of scholarship opportunities there are for students who do play instruments, right? And I think we, and I say, I use the term "we," generally speaking, gets essentially focused on the sports side of it, that if you're looking for a scholarship, get involved in sports, but I think we need to keep in mind, as a district and as a community, there are plenty of opportunities for students to advance their education through playing instruments and getting involved in the arts, and I think we, as a board, you're making a commitment to build a program, we as a board need to do what we can to help support that, so I thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you play the, or do you teach the kids to play the, I'm gonna say this wrong, the ukulele?
No, you said it quite correct, ukulele is a thing, and, no.
Yeah, I know, I got two of them in my house, I got two granddaughters to play them.
Okay, that is not something that is across the board in the curriculum for everyone. As music teachers, we specialize in things that work with our kids. So, for example, if Ms. Mullen here sees that, hey, there's a great drive in ukulele players, and everybody got a ukulele, she'll go and she will maybe take a lesson that she would do on maybe note reading and use the ukulele to work through it. There is not a place yet where we're sitting here and saying, well, if you start in fourth grade, you can play the ukulele up through twelfth grade, we're working on that, and that's part of what that survey's gonna be all about, to kinda get that information on what is it that you're interested in, and how are we gonna get you there through twelve years? So, that's kinda where we are. If there is interest, we do the best we can, you know, to help out when we can, but as I said, there's nothing concrete, we're gonna look in a book and say, oh, there's it is in the curriculum. Not quite yet, but if that's something they're really interested in, hey, let us know.
Well, I got two of them at my house.
Okay.
They got them, and they just make noise on them, but they play them, and I don't stop them.
And it's East Fallowfield.
Okay, there you go.
I would love to have a class set of ukuleles. I do play the ukulele, so.
Oh, okay.
I play for them in class, but we don't have a class set for me to teach them, so you know, that's something else that we can look at, is what materials, what materials maybe that we can purchase and use and things like that, so.
Can you imagine, Mary, a whole class of ukuleles?
Yeah.
Slightly better than a whole class of recorders, right? No, I actually really love teaching a recorder. I really love teaching a recorder.
[inaudible].
Actually, yeah.
Well, what can I get them to?
Go ahead.
Well, they don't wanna do nothing else, they wanna do that thing, but to get them interested in, to go into music.
Say that again?
What else can I get them in to go into?
To go into music, honestly, anything you do that encourages music-making at home is what I say all the time, singing, dancing, listening to music, anything that gets them encouraged to participate in any type of music-making at home encourages them to find their own way.
Okay. Thank you.
The, we always enjoy when we sit up here and you bring the kids doing the musical stuff. North Brandywine, last year, I remember them, 'cause they had a kid on the Vibes that was unbelievable, and that was just a joy to listen to, so we do enjoy the work that you're doing, and we're hopeful for you, and we support you one hundred percent.
We appreciate that.
Ms. Mills, may I jump in?
Oh, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hughes, always a pleasure.
Always.
Always a pleasure. You survived two, three of my kids, so, you know, you're a saint as far as I'm concerned. So, I have two questions. First one, marching band. I know in the past, there was some opportunities for middle schoolers to be, I don't know, not full-time involved, but playing at times with the marching band.
Oh, they were fully time-involved, yes.
They're full-time involved, okay, all right.
They can do everything.
Awesome. I'm working on her, so give me time. My other question is, is there plans, 'cause I know Mr. De Giuseppe is doing the theater program in the schools, in the middle schools, any plans with combining music to perform with the theater shows?
Okay, so, to be a hundred percent honest with you, the only level of musicians that we have that are really gonna be ready to do a full theater show like that would be your high school level. We have done the last, I wanna say, three productions that were done here, and we've had student pits. In the middle school, the music's just a little bit too difficult, and it's not anything they've done wrong, they're fabulous and they're great, it's just a little bit above them. We try and work to push towards that, so when we do have musical things happening, we do participate and we do help out, and it is a really good opportunity for students because I tell them, hey, listen, you can get a job playing for pit orchestras on the weekend when you're at college, that's what I did. Hey, you made money, it was really good, and you're still playing your instrument. So, that is in the music careers section of my high school curriculum, but as I said, in terms of anything going beyond the high school, not quite so much. Trying to get one production here is a lot of time and effort for the poor kids, and they're also doing the indoor drum line, and they, and like everything else that they do, that they do so well. I can't run them any thinner, but when they do do productions here, yeah, we're always involved.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
One last thing, Mr. Hughes, Meister Singers have plans to do a musical this spring?
I do not believe the musical is a part of the Meister Singers anymore, I believe that it was separated, so I'm not sure if there's a musical happening or not, but I will get back to you on that. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our second present, our second presentation this evening is Smart Pass. I'm looking forward to this. Smart Pass Digital Hall Pass System, Cliff Maloney and Julia Mastromarino. Who pushes the button? Can somebody help us get it on the screen? Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me if I stand here?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Public. Today, we are gonna be going over a very exciting opportunity at the campus. We have done some research over the summer, and we want to implement an electronic hall pass. It's called Smart Pass. We're gonna go over a very short presentation today, really kinda describing the ins and outs of the Smart Pass. It is going to really help us keep track of what students are in the hallway, how long they're gonna be in the hallway, it's gonna allow us to, also as we go through this, limit certain students from being together in the hallway at the same exact time, and it's really something that, you know, we've been looking at, we've been talking at it for the past couple of years here, but as we move forward here, you're gonna get a really But as we move forward here, you're going to get a really neat, like, opportunity to see, you know, what it is. And bottom line also, it'll come out of our budgets and what the cost is, but we've, we've kind of worked out a pretty good deal as we move forward here. So, Ms. Mastromarino, we're going to get started here.
Well, so we, as we introduce, it's a digital hall pass system. And in the presentation, you'll see that it's going to give both buildings, the administration, the ability to to manage student movement, to help prevent disruptive behavior, to expand safety during emergencies, and to provide key student data to our MTSS teams. As administration, we get to create the parameters, we get to sit in a room and create all the parameters for all of the areas in the building. And in those passes, we're able to name what locations the students can visit, the timeframe that will be in a pass, the restrictions that we want to impose, and we'll talk about all of those. But it's that expanded control that administration will have over the movement of students. So the way it works is a student would request to use a pass from a teacher to leave the classroom for a certain reason, and we'll go over a couple of those reasons. The teacher grants permission ostensibly, the student then creates the pass on his or her Chromebook, and the pass will show up then on the teacher's computer. The student then would leave the room, and the student does not need to have a computer or phone or anything with him or her, they can just leave on their own. And the hall monitor, or any administrator, anyone in the hallway, will be able to see who has been granted a pass, from whom, for where, for how long, and the picture will show with the pass and with the location and the destination.
So we're going to upload all the students' pictures into the system. It'll integrate with our system through Clever, and we're going to talk a little bit about that also. So we're in the hallway, and the hall monitors, or myself, as we're walking around, monitor who's in the hallway. We can pull it right up and see exactly who's in the hallway.
What are you pulling it up on?
Could pull it up on our Chromebooks, if we have an iPad or phones.
So whatever device you have.
Whatever device we have.
It'll be an app on our device.
Just not a notebook.
Gotcha.
It'd be tough.
No paper. Administrators and teachers will be able to see the past history of any student. This is going to be vital for a lot of reasons, but, you know, task avoidance is something that we're always trying to battle against. And so, this is important information that will go to MTSS, that the student, we can see in a day how many times a student has requested to leave the room for any particular reason. And that information, every two weeks, when we're discussing students and looking at data, it can be a point of interest that we can go over and kind of sort of redirect or find out what's really going on. That's just not information that we would otherwise have with paper passes, because there's no collection of that data. The system allows the staff to see exactly, in the building, exactly where everyone is going and for how long they have been out on the pass. The pass itself in a teacher's classroom will be on the teacher's computer. So anytime a teacher wants to, you know, they're teaching away and they can kind of look by and see student A, B, or C has been out, the time actually counts down for the pass, for the amount of time that the student is allowed out. We set those time limits ahead of time. And then, as soon as it reaches zero, it'll start to count up in red. And so the teacher at a glance can see students still out, or if the teacher then wants to make a phone call to the office to say, you know, there's someone that isn't back. So it's a, it's a great control for the teacher without them having to be as involved as they need to be or as they have been, just trying to remember what's going on. It allows administrators control over whether or not a student needs prior approval to go to a certain destination. So that was something we really liked. So, a student says, I want to, I need to go to the restroom. Teacher can say yes or no according to his or her own discretion, or timeframe, or however it's going in that classroom. But if student says, I need to go see my guidance counselor, I need to go to the main office, I need to go to the nurse, we can set designations like that to be PIN required. So that, it takes sort of the pressure off the teacher to have to say, yes, no, maybe, I don't know, go ahead, you know, you don't want to deny a student. If the student says, I want to see my guidance counselor, teacher will say, right, go ahead and request it. So, student will request a pass, and the guidance counselor on the other end, if that was the destination, would have to send a PIN to release that student. Student then gets the PIN, the pass is released, teacher can see that that pass was granted. And so that, it's just that detailed of control. Same would be for the main office, same would be for the nurse. It allows us to set occupancy limits. And so we can control the amount or the number of students who are out in the building at any particular time, whether it's at the office, at the nurse, at the guidance, in the restrooms. And when that limit is reached, the student will see that the pass cannot be granted, but that they would be in a waiting line. And then when that occupancy goes down, then the student's pass can be released. And the student can let, the teacher doesn't have to worry about it. Student could say, oh, it looks like my pass is freed up, teacher can glance, and then the pass can be granted.
So you can manage the amount of kids in the hall?
Correct.
During class time?
During the class time, and anytime we can manage who's in the hall, how many kids are in there, how many kids per floor? So if we want to do third floor, second floor, first floor, this can be this many kids out on the third floor. And then, you know, because they're only supposed to go to the bathroom up there, and now, you know, second. So it'll really kind of limit how many kids are out there.
Correct.
And it'll just, it's just going to reduce the amount of hall congestion. I think really too, it's going to really kind of teach us who's really trying to get out at what time and different times. So we can kind of make sure we know who needs to be in what classroom, what time, and not with who in the bathroom.
You can't learn if you're not in the classroom.
Correct. That's what we need, more time in the classroom.
So it'll also support our school climate and help us prevent disruptive behavior. So one of the things we mentioned was ability to block two or more students to get a pass at the same time. And that's not just because we know they like to be together. It might be because we want to prevent them from being together. There might be a conflict, there might be a bullying situation, there might be some reason that we want to manage the movement.
Correct, or they just have a history of going to the bathroom and staying in there way too long.
So the, without, and a lot of times, we also need the ability to determine who is in what specific part of the building at a particular time, based on whether it's an emergency, based on whether there's vandalism, based on whether there's a student, you know, who left the building, whatever. It helps us with our camera work, with our investigations, with any kind of situation that comes up that involves us seeing where they are.
Excuse me, I have a quick question about that.
Yes.
There's, there's, they're not, they don't have to carry a phone, they don't have to carry their device. So there's no GPS on the actual child, right? So they could say-
No, there's no GPS on the child.
So they could say, they could request a pass for the bathroom on, if they're on the third floor, and they could end up on the first floor in the bathroom.
The request for the bathrooms will be sent, I'm sorry.
I understand, but they can, but they can physically walk from the third floor down to the first floor to go to the bathroom, is what I'm saying.
Like a trick.
So as, with saying, determining who was in which area of which building without having to check cameras, I would be cautious, I would feel cautious about that only because, you know, if students are out to cause trouble, they're going to be where they're not supposed to be, regardless of what they put in what pass.
Correct, but we would also know who's out at what time. At any point, if we say students are only supposed to be on the third floor, go to the third floor bathroom, they will still sometimes, you know, go down to a different floor. And now that's why we have our hall monitors in there, and we're checking what floor you're supposed to be on, where you're supposed to be. That's ongoing now, also. Is it going to stop every single person from, you know, going down to the wrong floor or anything? No, we don't have GPS, we're not looking to do that, we're not looking to individually track students, you know, where they are at all times. That's not part of the program, but it'll at least know, we will know who's out, how much time they're spent, and then we can go back and we can take a look.
And the, when we initially set it up, each location is going to have a designation. So, restroom is going to be specific to restroom on the second floor by the library versus the second floor bathroom by, you know, some other, by the gymnasium. So each location will be very specific. So hall monitor sees picture of student, pick student, and the hall pass says student is supposed to be upstairs, the hall monitor knows student is out of area. So it's just more of support for us.
Correct.
Next slide. No, it is this slide, we did talk about it, sorry. Overall support to our student management as well. So it is student-driven, so it is going to not be the interruption to the teacher to stop to write the passes. And we've talked to the teachers about this, we asked them in over the summer with some of our ideas, safety ideas and changes that we were thinking about, and to get their input and see what they would think, because it's new, and would this be cumbersome or would this be helpful? And overall, they were very positive and thought this would be amazing, and they actually keep asking themselves when
Correct.
Be able to stop writing passes. They, we can limit the number of passes that a student can request, and a teacher can see that, an eighth-period teacher can see that periods one through eight, as soon as they pull up the student, the student has used the restroom every single class period. And so, do they deny, not necessarily, but do they report, does that come to us and say, hey, do we need to sit down? Is there something we can help you with? Do you need a medical situation resolved? Or is this task avoidance, so that we can pinpoint more so why they're always out?
We've already, at the intermediate, we've already kind of limited the amount of times generally the students are going to the bathroom, just because students were going a lot, so we already put a thing in where they're really kind of going three times a day. Of course, if it's a, you know, an emergency, something medical, obviously, there's always going to be exceptions, but we would note that.
We had our picture day recently, so we both, in both buildings, so all of that data will be uploaded. So we have all of the pictures of the students who were in school, and we have a makeup day, obviously, so we are able to have all that data. So that will all be loaded through the Clever platform and into our SIS, it pulls from e-schools. So everything will be easy to implement in that regard. And then we can run historical data for IEP meetings, even to talk to the IEP team about the movement of the student and what is going on with the student in terms of being in and out of classrooms. And then, of course, to our MTSS team, as well as just our overall safety. So that's the part of the student management that we're very excited about. So, implementation.
Yeah, we can go over that real quick. Also, one of the things we, it's also too, it's about safety also. And God forbid, anything does happen, because things do happen. You know, if we have to go into a situation where we have to have everybody, you know, stay within their classroom, and we have to get people back in the classroom, we will know exactly who is not in the classroom, and we have to go locate them, you know, put them back into the classroom, or move them to an area that's safe. I think, you know, it's an area, it's something that we didn't, you know, have to think about 30 years ago, but now, we do. We need to know exactly where everyone's at, all right? Who's out in the classrooms, who do we have to find, and who do we have to make sure is safe and secure? So this will help us and assist us as we move through these sometimes situations where we find ourselves in.
It's very easy to implement, the company that we have researched and agreed that we thought was the best one for us is the Smart Pass. It's being used, I think every single school in the county is using electronic hall pass of one or the other. Some using Smart Pass, Unionville, Pensbury, large schools that are using Smart Pass and have been very successful with it. It takes, as they said, within one week, it can be turned around. As we said, we already have all the information in our SIS system, the affordability is part of it.
Correct. So we, Julie really kind of worked out a pretty good deal with them. We talked them down, down to $2.39 per student for the school year. It's for, you know, approximately around, you know, a little over $5,200. But we got that price at around 2,500 kids, and we don't have 2,500 kids on campus, but we were to work with them so we can implement it. We will also get professional development for our staff, so they can kind of, so they're going to know exactly how to use it. So, you know, it'll be electronically, we can present it to them, we can practice it before we start putting it in. We'll roll it out to the students, explain to the students, explain to the parents exactly, you know, what the Smart Pass system is. Of course, there's, you know, there's going to be, I'm sure, a couple glitches, we're going to get used to the entire process, but it's brand new. We're super excited for the opportunity to put this into place. And once we get this rolling, I think, you know, for our students' safety, just monitoring, and knowing exactly where they are. And Ms. Mills, you said it best, students learn best when they're in a classroom, not in the hallways. Unless we're teaching a class in the hallways. Any questions?
Yes.
That was a lot of questions.
I have one question. Is there any way that you, that if you have a group of students that seem to show up at the same time? In other words, I don't like to use the word gang-related, but buddies?
Cluster.
Or stuff like that, they meet at 2:00 or 3:00, would that send a red flag to a teacher saying, wait, why you got the same guys showing up at the same time?
We can build that directly into the program, where we'll not allow them to all go at the same time. So they would have to go at different times. So if we, if we know there's a certain group of students that want to meet up at the same time, we can eliminate that.
Then you can put it into the program.
Correct.
And if there was a rumor of trouble or something brewing in the school, and we knew who those kids were, if the same kids started showing up in the bathroom, that would, that would give the teachers a heads-up alert?
Yeah, if we hear anything like that, we're able to adjust on a daily basis who we could get, who could go at the same time, and who can't go at the same time.
You could check the screen too.
Correct.
Right, if, like what he's saying, you hear something's going to be coming up at 2:00, you can see who's out.
But we can do instant blocks, like if it's a fluid situation, we can go in and we can just clickety-clack what students we don't want together. And that would be vital.
We normally, we do that like through now, like through emails or stuff, you know, we communicate with our staff. But this would be, you know, we would still communicate with the staff, but we would put in those roadblocks for them.
Just like the unfortunate incident we had where the kid got stabbed in the bathroom. Well, we knew there was problems between these kids before. And had that, we had something like you were talking about now, if we had seen those two in there, those numbers showed up, that would alert us immediately that we might want to look at that?
They wouldn't be issued a pass. Had we restricted them, the pass would not be able to be created.
They couldn't go.
Okay.
They wouldn't be let out of the room because there would be no pass for them together.
Okay.
I have a question. So, how, how soon are you looking to implement this? And is it just going to be at the campus?
Right now, currently, would just be at the campus.
Okay.
And we would like to do it as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I, you know, we could probably get it up and running, you know, within a week or two. But what we want to do is make sure that we train our staff in it first.
Okay, and then a question related to staff, because the two of you were both mentioning hall monitors. So, when you use the term hall monitor, are you-
Teachers.
Teachers?
Administrators.
Administrators, okay.
Behavioral staff.
Okay.
That was their semantics from that, I was reading that in there.
And how many, we'll say, hall monitors are you looking, like, per floor, per area, like, what are you looking?
Each period, we have different teachers on duty that move around all of the floors.
Okay, okay, so it's more than just one, then?
Yes, it's more than just one. Except for extreme circumstances where we have, you know, a lot of staff out for sickness and they would have to do coverage. But, yeah, we always have somebody out there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So, what, so this is, this, it's a software that gets put on a laptop, right? For the student?
Correct.
Okay, so how does, what's the contingency? I'm assuming you go back to a paper pass for a student that forgets their laptop at school?
They don't need it.
The teacher, the teacher then can create the pass right there. Just like, you know, instead of a teacher writing a paper pass, they would still create the pass right on their Chromebook. Right on their, yeah, laptop.
Okay. Second question, and you may not, may or may not know this, this may be a mic-subject question. In operations, we're looking at EMS, VMS, visitor management system. Has there been conversation about the integration of this to that system? Reason being, you have a emergency at whatever given point in the day, you know you have people out in the hallway, go to one place for all of your accountability versus having to check the EMS on the navigate side, and then the Smart Pass on the Smart Pass side, having to flip through two different frameworks? Have we asked a question, and again, you may or may not know, this may be a subject question, but have we asked a question, can Smart Pass integrate into the EMS system so that you're looking at one spot for all of your accountability?
Yeah, we, when we went through the demonstration, we didn't really get into that side of it. That's something that we would definitely have to just check and confirm that that could happen, and we'd have to also work with Mr. Sobcek on that.
Student, so are we asking the students to download this app on their computer? Or is IT going to download it on their, so are building techs responsible for putting this on each student's laptop? Or are we asking students to put it on their laptops?
We're not asking students to put it on there.
But Smart Pass would do.
Smart Pass will-
That's part of their, when they say one week, they work with Clever and upload everything, they map all the pictures, and they do all of that with our IT.
With our, you know, with the permissions from the IT.
Okay, so IT is uploading this onto all the systems?
And we ran it by Mike before we even put together the presentation about that.
Okay, and then have we, have we done a beta run? Or we just kind of, did we have somebody come out and do a beta run of this, or was it just-
No, we have to, you know, like, kind of move forward first before we do the beta run, because they've done it with so many other districts.
Okay, so have we, I'm assuming we've done, like, they've come out and physically shown us how this works?
We've ran everything, all the information that we had, that we've got from the demonstrations, we provided that through our technology. And through that, really, it's really just kind of through Clever, they said, just kind of uploads right away. It should not be that difficult to upload.
And I don't disagree that it shouldn't, right, but I guess-
You have questions.
My question is, have we, have we, have we tested it, right? Have we, have we physically seen it and ultimately know that it's going to function the way they're telling us it's going to function?
No.
And we called the other schools that are already using it, that have been using it for quite a while, and asked them if they were pleased and if they were, you know, it's something that they would need.
And if they've used like e-schools or anything like that, yeah.
Very happy with it.
All right. I mean, it makes me a little nervous, but...
I understand.
I have a question also. So when, if, with the destination where a guidance counselor, nurse, somewhere else, somebody else has to send a PIN or something like that to grant the pass, how is the teacher or guidance counselor, nurse, whoever on the receiving end notified? If he or she is not sitting right in front of the computer, and they're busy with someone else, how do we know that that pass isn't hanging for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes?
It will, because they're busy. That's the point. It's not an emergency. Other student would say it was an emergency, and that would be handled differently. It's, it's a matter of the student wanting to leave a classroom during instruction to go see a guidance counselor. You know, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the management and the control over, over what's happening in the school. We want the student in the classroom. Student can make an appointment during lunchtime, or after school, before school, or during transition, to see a guidance counselor, and then the guidance counselor can send the PIN for an appointment. But if the student just wants to see a guidance counselor at any particular time, the student can send the request. And if at some point during that day, during that time, the, the guidance counselor will eventually see it and send, send the PIN back. That PIN can follow, will follow the student. The student could see that on the student's Chromebook, when, when the, when the guidance counselor is available. Does that make sense?
It does. I worry a little bit about IEPs and things that are written into behavioral plans and stuff like that, for students who have certain, not parameters, but allowances made. So I do worry a little bit about that, but...
Well, I think that that's going to be very individually planned with the teacher. Teacher already knows the IEP. Teacher already knows what those parameters should be, and that that would be supported in the classroom with the teacher, and we can make those adjustments.
Okay.
Let me just ask one more question. Sometimes there's a fight, or there's a serious argument or consultation. And would the teacher be able to be alerted as to the people that were involved, and you wouldn't want them to have a pass at the same time to meet someplace? Because that's been some of the problems in the school here, is the wrong people, they on their phone, and they meet in those bathrooms.
That's exactly what this is. We, as, as we said, even fluidly, like, right away, the first thing that we can do is go in and change the restrictions. And if the student is in the classroom, gets the text, right, meet up.
Yeah.
It's go. Teach, ask the teacher, I need a pass. Teacher says, okay, create one. It's blocked. Teacher says, can't help you.
I was thinking that would be a good idea.
It's very helpful.
If security got to notice also. As far as, sometimes an argument can turn into a serious fight.
Absolutely.
And if the teachers and the security had a heads-up, at least
Yeah.
they would know where to go and maybe prevent that.
And we do that all the time. This is just an extra layer of support and control and safety management that we're hoping to put in place.
All right.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, who would have complete oversight of the real-time views of those pass usages?
Administration.
Okay. And if our administration is off-campus for PD or off-campus for administrative?
Yeah, we're not, we're not all away.
But there's a lot of students on campus, right?
Yeah.
So there's, there would be one person overseeing the potential of fifty, sixty, seventy passes at one time, between two buildings?
It's better than paper right now.
Oh, I don't disagree. I just want to make sure that
Yeah, we would have to
So when you're implementing something, you have to implement with fidelity. So my concern is that we put this program in place, but there's not somebody checking it. Because kids aren't stupid. Children are very intelligent, and they will pick up on the fact that they're, the oversight isn't there. Right? So I just want to make sure that
Yeah, but we're going to limit that before we would go.
And if we had fewer administration in, if we had fewer administration in at a certain point, then we would reduce the number allowed.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
So you would constrict the ability for, understood. Okay. Next question is, how would you benchmark the effectiveness of this program?
How would you benchmark?
So if I was to come back to Mr. Maloney next year and said, tell me how effective this program has been.
So I, I think it would start off with some of our MTS data, to see how many, how it was affecting students in and out of the classroom. How many, if we really kind of take a look at, like, you know, where we started out at, like, we're going to see, like, how many kids are going to be out, and then if we have to eliminate, you know, puts more restrictions on whatever it is. We're going to see who's in and who's out of the classroom. But I think when you really kind of see it, you know, we can look at attendance within the classroom. We can take a look at, you know, data, like, how are they actually performing academically in the classroom. So this year, it's really kind of going to set a benchmark of where we're at, and if we have to make any adjustments or any changes as we move throughout there. So I think, I'm going to be honest with you, once we put it into place, we're going to have to really kind of, you know, learn and grow as we move forward with it also. Do we have this nailed down yet? No.
No, I wouldn't expect you to.
Right, no. I don't, like, you know, every time you see the presentation, you know, like, oh, we're, we're going to nail it. No, there's going to be some, you know, issues that pop up, or things that we see that we're going to have to make some changes, or we're going to have to adapt to. So I would say, you know, give us a couple, give me a couple months, and I can come back and tell you exactly, you know, how effective it is so far. You know, what are we seeing? You know, what are some of the benefits from it? What are some of the negatives? Have we, have we seen anything that we didn't really anticipate happening? So what I'm asking for is just a little bit of time to see exactly kind of where we're at.
Sure.
All right? Because we could come back to you in June and say, this wasn't effective, right? I don't anticipate that, but anybody here knows me, if I see something that's not working, I'm going to come and say, this is not working, we need to move in a different direction.
So for the record, I, I think this is a great idea.
All right, we're out.
And it's, it's, it's outside-the-box thinking. It's being innovative in a way to mitigate incidents and have a better handle on problems that have arose over the last twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months. So I can appreciate the line of thinking. My last question that I have would be, so we're making a change. We have PD, we'll probably get our teachers up to speed on what the expectations are, how to utilize, how to implement. How is that message conveyed to our students and to the parents? I think it's important that when we make those changes, that our parents understand the changes, because it impacts their kids. I, I wouldn't want to find out from my kid, one day they come home and say, oh, by the way, I have to use my Chromebook for a hall pass in order to go use the restroom.
Right.
So how would that message, how would the students be, we'll call it, we'll use the term "trained"? And then how will the, this new process be explained to parents?
So, obviously, what we're going to do, is we're going to have to present the information to the, to the parents, give out information exactly where it is, the Monday morning messages, you know, additional newsletters explaining what the whole program is, you know, very similar to, you know, some of what our presentation is here, and how it's going to work out. Students, we've already kind of started, started prepping them, right from the beginning of the year with class meetings, saying, listen, right now, we're going to be starting off with paper. Our goal is to move into electronic hall passes. So we'll sit down and, you know, you know, during a first-period class, you know, when they all come in, you know, give them a little bit of training how to do it, because they're going to have to get used to it. Now, they're pretty quick with technology, the majority of them. I mean, you know, it's real simple. They're going to figure it out pretty quickly. But, you know, we'll take the time to teach, demonstrate, and let them know exactly how to operate, you know, the electronic hall pass. And the same exact thing with the teachers, you know, we would roll that out first to the teachers, let them practice a little bit, you know, we'll do it at a faculty meeting, let them practice it, and then we can roll it out, you know, you know, the following week, after they've had a little bit of time to work with it.
Okay. And then assuming once, once everything's board-approved and you guys have the green light to go forward, some type of communication would go out to parents to set proper expectations as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I do have a question. You said in your presentation, and then I know when Mr. Rowan asked, that the students don't need to have their Chromebook, because my concern is, we're going to put this out to parents, and you're going to have parents who are going to say, my kid doesn't have a Chromebook, because there's a lot of students that don't have them. There's also students that don't bring them home, they have to get them, you know, when they come in. So when the communication goes out, we will just be very clear that the student does not need to have a device to use this pass, correct?
Correct, correct. We'll put that information out. And the last thing I want is a bunch of Chromebooks in the bathroom, anyway.
Yes, I agree.
So, we want to...
So they would just, like, raise their hand, hey, Ms. Maloney, you need to use the bathroom. You would then...
And I would just do the electronic hall pass right there.
Okay.
Right on my computer, and I would keep track of it.
Now, what happens for the students that don't have the Chromebook, that need the PIN from the guidance counselor, the nurse?
They would just come to their teacher. They would just come to their teacher, so if it was then later.
So like, their teacher that they were having, like, because we switch teachers so many ti-
They'd have to ask again, probably, or the, the guidance counselor would just call and look up the scheduled call that we're in this day, you know, the PIN.
Okay.
It wasn't used, you know, any time, at any point. But that's like a little thing that we have to work out, because we want to be able to, for students who don't have a phone, don't have, because it can be their phone as well. It doesn't have to be a Chromebook, it can be on, an app on their phone as well, for the pass.
But, but there's also the policy that they can't use their phone during the day?
Yeah, that's true.
So I, I, I'm
I understand. We, we don't want
I know, I just, right, I just
But I mean, they could, they could see the PIN, like, if they weren't, I'm sorry, they don't look at it at all.
Right.
They just could see the PIN, come in. And that's what they'll say. I'm totally looking for it.
Right, right, okay. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that communication goes out, because we will hear, you know, we don't have a Chromebook.
Yeah, we'll get the information out, just so everybody knows exactly how it's going to work, and so they're clear. So what we don't start getting is, my student doesn't have the Chromebook yet. So we would say that it'll be also teacher-driven.
Okay.
All right, they can ask their teacher for the pass, just as they've been doing since the beginning of time, that, you know, can have a pass, this summer, just to be electronically.
Thank you.
And the teachers can create the passes, or the students can create passes. It doesn't have to be one or the other.
Okay.
And it can be on purpose, just the teacher, if we restrict it as a measure of
Safety.
Consequence, safety, control.
Or even if it was some-
Any number of reasons that, you know, one of your consequences is, because you, you know, maybe taking advantage of the system, or this, or that, is where you're only, only a teacher is going to be able to create your passes from now on.
Or if it's a pass that's earned.
Something like that.
Speaking of like an IEP, they can earn.
As well.
Correct.
Most ninety percent of our students would be, you know, completely wonderful, and, you know, of course, responsible, and they'll be able to create their own pass, and that's a measure that they have a degree of control
Sure.
over their day, too. And I think that that's going to be, I mean, teaching them time management, teaching them, you know, peers, and they can see their own history, too, like, look how, you know, you can see it. And I think that also goes to their wing time discussions that can be happening then.
Right.
That we can let the wing teacher know, hey, we found this situation, can you include it when you talk about tennis? We have a full day that they talk about tennis, and that would be one of the things that they could be talking about. Your attendance in your classes is one thing, you're there, but you keep leaving, and we see that, and it's a huge data point that we can talk about.
Right. Thank you.
I have one more follow-up. Yeah. So, Mr. Maloney, I heard you say, as soon as possible. Do we have a target date that we're trying to hit to, to get this in? Like, so presentation now, are you looking to get some sort of draft quote for end of the month, beginning of October? To get, like, do we have some, some benchmarks that we're trying to hit?
The key was, is to get it, as soon as it's approved, then, they said that we can get everything uploaded within a week, and then we can start rolling it out from there.
So...
So we could have it theoretically by
But do we have a projected timeline to get it on the board agenda?
The end of the month.
Well, let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
It's not on the board agenda tonight.
Correct, it's not on tonight.
All that's going to be done is, is passed through the committee tonight.
Committee, right.
So at the very earliest, at the end of the month.
Right.
If it is approved, then you'll have an opportunity to move forward.
All right. And then my second, it's not really a question, and I guess it's more of a request, if, or a recommendation for, for somebody in the administration to go do a site visit to one of the neighboring schools that has it, to see it in real-time and application?
Sure.
Because one of the things I see oftentimes is vendor sells said product, and you don't get what you thought you were getting, and there's, there's some hiccups. So if, my recommendation is, somebody can hop in, pop into one of the, or two of the neighboring schools to see it in real-time, really talk to about what are the challenges they've run into, so that we can either prevent some of those, going back to Smart Pass, and how to say, hey, we went and solved this, we encountered these challenges, are you working on updates? Is, like, kind of, where's this at? So make sure that we are spending the right dollars at the right places, or maybe you have to go to another vendor who does the same thing, so.
Yeah, we can go within the next two weeks.
Well, I'm optimistic. I suspect that when you start looking at that data, your eyes are just going to kind of pop, because we've been challenged with free-flowing students in the hallway. And any organization and management of that is good, because they can just get into mischief. So the more time they're learning, the less time they're in the hallways making mischief is good for everybody. And it's, the price tag is within reason. So we look forward to moving it from committee and up the line, and seeing you implement it in October sometime.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Agenda item 4A, WCU reading practicum placements. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the placement of reading practicum students from Westchester University with Coatsville Area School District Elementary Teachers as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any comments or questions? What, the comment that I have is, it's a very long list, lots of names, and we are very grateful for the practicum students from Westchester to come here and work with our students. Call for the vote?
Yes. Ms. Mills, may I please, sorry to interrupt. Can somebody share with me, is this at the elementary level?
Yes, elementary.
Thank you.
We're good? Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. B, request to perform North Brandywine cheerleading. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve, the request for the North Brandywine Middle School Cheerleading Team to perform at a community event as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any comments, questions? Does some tell us what community event it is?
It's the Grand Prix.
Oh, thank you. We look forward to seeing them. Okay, call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. C, gifted practicum agreement. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the agreement with Millersville University to allow Shelley McAllister to mentor Hannah Kaptur through completion of her gifted education clinical practicum as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any comments or questions? Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. D, Smart Pass Quote Contract. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of Smart Pass digital hall pass for the intermediate and senior high school as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And that's the one that we just saw, the presentation, and had a lot of lively dialogue. So let's call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. E, College Board Contract, PSAT and SAT testing. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the annual contract and quote for PSAT and SAT testing as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. F, Middle School Success Path to Graduation P2G. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the consultant agreement with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide support to the team at Coatsville Area Intermediate High School to continue development and implementation of Middle School Success, the Path to Graduation P2G as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Pallad, do you want to talk a little bit about this one?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney, you want to say a little bit about it?
Yep. There's the mic, yep. So, P2G.
Okay, so at the intermediate high school, we've been working, started working last year on obtaining a grant, the P2G grant. And I'll just give you a quick little background. It's a, uh, the path to graduation provides intensive, ongoing professional development and coaching using evidence-based instructional and adult learning practices that build the capacity of schools to address academic and behavioral needs of middle school students with disabilities, in particular, students identified with emotional disturbance. Uh, P2G builds local educational agencies' capacity to support middle school students identified as having emotional behavioral disorders and achieving high school graduation. So what we have started, just to give you a, a little bit about this, we started the process, uh, with Dr. Cole and Dr. Austin, uh, attending the first training to receive some of the training. And on September twenty-first, uh, our members, uh, will receive training, uh, during the Professional Development Day. The second part of the training will take place during the October Professional Development. And the first part of training is going to focus on Check and Connect, uh, which is an intervention for students who show, uh, warning signs of disengagement, uh, with school and who are at risk of dropping out. Check and Connect is essentially, uh, really trusting relationships between a student and caring trained mentor who both advocate for, uh, challenges to the student. So this is a three-year grant. Um, and each year, we're awarded ten thousand dollars to assist with the program. Uh, we can use the money for a variety of resources, such as, uh, flexible seating in classes, field trips, incentives, any additional training, basically everything except for food, you can't provide any food. To date, we've just started using the grant money, uh, we bought books for all of our mentors, uh, costing around eight hundred dollars. And at this point right now, uh, we currently have around fifteen eighth-grade students and five ninth-grade students who are primarily dosed, diagnosed with emotional disturbance. Uh, we have six mentors that are going to be trained, working with them, uh, and they're allowing us to continue to support, uh, for our ninth-grade students from last year.
Right.
Uh, because it is a middle school, uh, grant, uh, but they are allowing us to use it to continue mentoring the students at this time.
That's wonderful.
Any questions down the line?
No, I'm good, thank you. Mr. Maloney, this is for, um, students who have already been identified? Or is it in an assessment as well?
Have been identified and then are in the process.
Are in the process.
But we have to identify first, but it's really, it's going to be setting up systems, uh, so that we're providing support with them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, because once we get it set up in, say, some of the, you know, say, the eighth grade, and then we have these systems set up as they move through the ninth grade, and, and we keep moving it up, we're going to continue giving them support. The key is, is to have them working with a trusting adult, uh, do it research-based, uh, it'll line up also with our MTSS. We can, uh, check data, uh, we can make sure that, you know, they're going to be successful.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
One small question, um, the Board of, uh, Montgomery County, do you feel that they are, um, familiar with Coatesville and the disparity here? Because we have a lot of minority students, and I don't see too much coming off where we're taken into consideration here.
Well, it, it.
They don't understand certain cultures, and that's not a put-down, that's just to say that some of our kids need to see kids that look like them. And I don't see Chaney, I don't see Lincoln, I don't see this school considering our minority kids the way they should. Maybe I'm wrong, if I am, would you please correct me?
Yeah, so this is, is not just, say, from Montgomery County, this is a statewide grant program that goes across the state. Uh, so if you, you, I, I can show you some data of how many other schools are involved with the grant and, and have earned it. It's a really good opportunity for us, and it's just going to give us some additional training, it's going to give us additional resources, you know, for, for students that need additional, and, and they need support. So I, I understand where you're coming from, trying to, you know, figure out, is it, is it, you know, the right program from it? But this is a, a statewide, it's a research-based, uh, program, you know, like the Check and Connect, where it, it's going to teach our mentors how to work with our students.
Do you feel satisfied with it, that they're going to?
I'm excited for the opportunities, so excited for the training, so excited to, you know, the mentors get trained, uh, to start working with the, the students.
So it's, it's our people.
It's our people.
Yeah, and it's our.
It's our, it's our teachers.
Our people.
We have teachers in our building getting trained.
So they do have a variety?
They have a connection, they've already developed relationships, uh, it's just going to, you know, make them more well-rounded.
Okay. You know, my theory is a fly, I mean, an eagle can't teach a, a crow how to fly, so you have to have like things, and you, and I'm understanding you to say, there is disparity there. I mean, our kids are going to be able to see someone they can really relate to and trust.
It's, it's our staff, it's our staff. So they're already working with them.
All right.
Yep.
Just gives them more resources.
Correct.
To work with them, and, and, and a continuation of it.
More opportunities for the students.
Yeah, yeah, the more we can do to help them, the better it is. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. G, Social Work Program Affiliation Agreement Widener University. Recommended action, pending legal review, that the Board of School Directors approve the affiliation agreement with Widener University, which outlines the expectations for educational experiences for university students completing social work program internships as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And this is, we've had several of these now, so now this is the one with Widener. So we're looking forward to working with the Widener and other universities with these social work programs. Let's call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. H, Dropbox Hello Sign License Subscription. Recommended action, that the Board of School Directors approve the order form from Dropbox for an annual subscription renewal of Hello Sign licenses at the cost of twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And Hello, Hello Sign is the electronic signature that we're using on a lot of the documentation to facilitate, um, supporting, uh, the community and our parents and whomever. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Informational items, uh, there's an enrollment report. Um, there, on the, um, board docs, you can also see the elementary toolkit and the secondary toolkit for MTSS. And then there's going to be also attached on the, um, K to twelve assessment calendar. Any old business? New business, now we have public comment?
Thank you.
Lori Shannon Bailey.
Good evening, um, Board Member Miles, it was great to hear you say that children can't learn when they are not in school. Um, I thought of the sixty-plus students that were adjudicated this past year, so I'm glad to hear that you realize that, um, our adjudicated students were not learning when they were not in school. So thank you for that. I was happy to see the reading students, sixteen students from Westchester University spending time with students from Kings Highway, East Faliville, and Rainbow. Um, I wonder though, how you all made the decision for those students to only work, uh, with the Westchester students to only work with students in the elementary school, when we have students at the middle school level and the high school level that have, uh, challenges reading. Um, I'm advocating for an eighth grader who is reading on a fourth grade, um, comp, reading comprehension level. So I think the public would appreciate knowing, um, how you, um, made that decision when there are indeed students throughout the district that are, you know, have reading challenges. And my last question is a question that I've asked you all many times before, maybe not exactly, um, in terms of the SAT, is it mandatory for students, um, in the eleventh and twelfth grade? Um, and would you consider the ACT for students who would want to take that? I know you're paying for, uh, the, the SAT, uh, if a student wanted the district to pay for the ACT, would that be an option? Thank you.
Next meet, next meeting is Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and I adjourn at seven eighteen.
I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee. First order of business is approval of the minutes, recommended action, approval of the August ninth, twenty twenty-two Finance Committee meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
And we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, first up, we have a presentation of Power School Predictive Enrollment Analytics, uh, Mr. Joel Hill.
And Ron, mi- mic check from your end?
Yeah, good evening, everyone, just want to make sure you can hear me okay?
Can hear you a little bit, is that supposed to be coming through?
You're good.
You're good.
Another person?
Mic check one more time, Ron?
Hello, good evening.
Uh, not quite, I can, I can see up on the screen, I believe the board members can hear you, but not coming through the auditorium speakers yet.
Testing, testing.
There we go, okay.
Can you hear me now okay, Joel?
Not yet.
Okay, just give me a heads up when.
Sure. Ron, try one more time?
Hello, good evening.
We can hear you, but barely. Okay.
Okay.
School board members, are you able to hear Ron on your end? Okay, perfect, then we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentle, gentlemen, members of the board, thank you for allowing Power School to present this evening. Uh, my name's Joel Hill, I'm the Senior Account Manager from Power School for the State of Pennsylvania. We are joined on the line by Ron Van Orden, my colleague, uh, Account Director, uh, for Predictive Enrollment Analytics with Power School. Uh, I'm going to get things kicked off with a brief presentation, just a couple slides, and then Ron is going to give you a high-level overview of the software live this evening. So, we're going to, as I said, take a look at predictive enrollment analytics. Uh, in addition to a state-of-the-art enrollment analytics platform or engine, this solution provides a technology platform, uh, that is built specifically for education that allows our clients to do things such as enrollment forecast scenarios, new housing studies, boundary consulting, school, uh, capacity studies, student yield studies, and it has a school locator. Uh, so you'll be taking a live look at that tonight. On screen, uh, is a listing of all of the various Power School applications available to our clients today. Uh, this would be an expansion of your current partnership with Power School. Uh, so you can see on the far left there, Predictive Enrollment Analytics. So this contract, um, has a, if you, if you looked at the, uh, the proposal, has a shortened first year, and it aligns with your fiscal calendar, uh, but this would be an expansion of that partnership and fall under the same terms and conditions of the contract that you already have in place for, uh, such products as eSchool Plus. Uh, in fact, later this week, we're going to be taking a look at three additional Power School applications, uh, with your team. All right. To the left is a list of the twenty-seven public school districts that currently use predictive enrollment analytics today. And out to the right is a map of the various, uh, districts in the local area that we have worked with for an enrollment projections, uh, project of some sort in the past. So, uh, a nice collection of folks that have used it, or that use it today, and then out to the right, you can see a pushpin there, uh, for Coatesville, and, and where, uh, this has been very popular and successful, uh, with other districts. With that, we're going to turn things over to Ron to share his screen and, uh, and give you guys a live look tonight.
Okay, uh, so it looks like I need to be, uh, given the okay to share.
Can we make Ron, uh, presenter, so he can, let's see if I can do that from my end, Ron?
Okay.
Let me see.
And so while he's doing that, members of the board, I'll, I'll go ahead and get started. Um, really want to be here to answer any questions that you have, so as we go, if questions come up, I'd love to hear those. Uh, and of course, I will endeavor to answer any questions you may have at the very end.
Share his screen.
Um, as, as Joel mentioned, uh, we do work with a lot of districts in the state. We work with, uh, about two hundred and fifty districts currently on an active, ongoing basis across the whole country. You may know the name Decision Insights as, uh, that's the name of this solution prior to becoming part of Power School, which happened in October of twenty twenty. Can, can we? Uh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can, can we get the audio problem fixed before this? I, I have no idea that the.
Sure, and, and ultimately, we'd like to get Ron to be able to share his screen, so you can see the, the live software. It looks like Zoom's not set up to, to allow us to pers, to make him a, a co-host or share his screen right now, so we've got to get that technology situated. Ron, and, and you tried to share your screen already, and, and it doesn't have that option?
It just says you need, uh, you cannot start, uh, screen share while the other participant is sharing.
Okay, how about now, try now?
There we go. Perfect.
All right.
Um, now what we want to do about the audio, did we get that?
Yeah, that does. Ron, give us a mic check.
Uh, hello, good evening. How do I sound?
No, not yet.
Testing, one, two, three.
Ron, mic check.
Hello, good evening. How do I sound now, better, hopefully?
No, unfortunately not. I think that was me.
One more time.
One more time, Ron?
Hello and good evening.
That, that's better. Okay, let's go with it.
All right. Should I go ahead, are we good?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone, um. All right, as I was saying, so the, um, we're probably still most well-known, or many customers still refer to us as Decision Insight. Uh, as of October of twenty twenty, we became part of Power School, now called Power School Predictive Enrollment Analytics. Ultimately, this platform is designed to give leaders, district leadership, uh, visibility into your enrollment, where it's been, where it is today, and where it's going. And then beyond that, there's an array of tools that allow, uh, district leaders to examine the different, uh, enrollment policies that may be in, or under consideration, and to actually test and validate those scenarios based on actionable data. So in a nutshell, the platform does, uh, several things. It helps you visualize where the, uh, all of your students are, where they. It helps you visualize where the, uh, all of your students are, where they live, and where they attend. It also includes two 10-year enrollment forecasts, which I'll dive into a little bit, uh, in more detail in just a second. They are done at the district level and at each site. So you do get by-school, by-grade forecasts for every site in your, uh, district. And we do assess and quantify the impact of new housing as well. Where it's occurring, what's being built, when it's expected to be sold and occupied, and what schools would be impacted by the increase, potential increase of new students. So let me run through a quick example, which I like to show in these, in these settings, because it brings all of these different pieces together. Uh, so you can see this is a, a, a customer of ours, and I've displayed their elementary school sites and their elementary boundaries. And then I'll just go ahead and you can plot, uh, the students on a map, and you can really display all students or subsets of students. You can display sub, uh, students by any sort of criteria, like, uh, students that, uh, have received special services from the district. If you just wanted to show those students, you'd be able to. Uh, coincidentally, the, the, this platform also is what helps us project your enrollment the most accurate way possible. But let's go through an examination. I just wanted to zoom in here to East Vin, uh, Vincent. You can see that you have some students displayed. The, uh, East Vin, Vincent students are, I'm gonna actually change the color so they stand out a little bit more. Let me try again here. Let's make them, uh, very dark color so they stand out there. There we go. So you can see, there's the East Vis, Vincent students. The other students are attending a different campus. Uh, I'm gonna highlight these red areas. Those are new homes that are being developed in that area. So you can see that this school, uh, this elementary is gonna receive the impact of those students a little bit more. So, in an example, this is a good example of like a potential, uh, change. We wanted to test, we wanted to validate what you're allowed, what you can do. And I should note that everything you're seeing is what district staff would have access to. You could say, well, if you wanted to take this area and see if this is a viable school boundary, you could just create it, just like I'm doing now. Obviously, I'm doing this rather quickly. But you can see, now that I'm excluding this area here, we now have 242 students. Maybe I wanna make that a little bit larger. I can just go ahead and edit, move those lines. Now I'm up to 380. This really helps me get a good sense of where the students are. But the willpower is that you can then take this and do a unique projection for that, to give a sense of what is gonna happen in the future. Would this boundary be appropriate and appropriately sized for the, uh, 10-year future? You can see, uh, 332 students, and it really pretty much stays steady. It actually declines a few students. So it's really powerful information if you're looking at changing any school sites or anything like that. Again, getting a good sense of what's going to happen to make sure that you're putting policies that are the best for, for your, uh, community and for your parents and students. Uh, Joel mentioned, um, locator. I'll point that out in just a second. Wanted to mention the, go ahead.
Ron, the, uh, whenever you did the projection, I don't know if you're sharing just that window, but that didn't pop up.
Let's do that again here. Stop sharing, and then reshare. Screen two, okay. And I'll just go ahead and run it out again. Um, do that geographic projection. Okay, fifth grade. And this takes just a second to run. Okay, are you seeing it now? Are you seeing this? Okay, yes. Uh, maybe it moved out of the screen or something. But you can see there are 332, K through fifth. You can do this for any grade bands you'd like. Um, you could do this for, uh, middle and high school, obviously, as well. Uh, we do take into account students that don't attend their zone school for whatever reason. But, uh, transferring over to the projections, the reason that this technology works is that our analysts and researchers will generate two 10-year enrollment forecasts, uh, for the district. Each year, you're a customer, so this is an annual, ongoing process. You'd get new, updated, new housing research and enrollment forecasts every year. You'd stay as a customer. And we do actually a moderate and a conservative projection. So we're looking at the moderate right now. Differences between the two, there are some methodological differences, but the moderate is designed to always show the greatest, uh, number of students, and the moderate would show the fewest number of students. So you actually get two looks at your long-term trends. You can see that you have some historical years here, and then the 10-year future. Everything in our platform is designed to be able to export it very easily. So if I wanted to take this graph out, I could do that. Or if I wanted to pull this table out to Excel, I could do that. Um, wanted to mention, uh, by-school, by-grades, same format. You can see now here, we're starting with elementary. Alphabetically, we go down. And now you have the same 10-year projection, but at each school level. This percentage here, uh, is showing the year-over-year percentage enrollment change. So you can see this district, or I'm sorry, this school declined a little bit, grew a little bit, and it's gonna decline again. Again, useful information. It helps, uh, our customers use this for planning for how much staff they need. Uh, if there's any capacity issues, you can track capacity in here. So if there's ever a school that exceeds the capacity, you could plan ahead and talk about what's best to mitigate that. Um, and then I also wanna just revisit briefly here the new housing. I'll scroll all the way down here. You have one, two, three. You have a few other developments over here. Here's a report, very accessible. You can see a reporting now on what's being built, what type of housing is being built. And the, this represents the year in which those units are expected to be sold and occupied. So that helps give visibility into, is this something that is eight, 10-years out? Or is it something more near-term, like this Weatherstone Apartments? 89 units expected to be sold and occupied, uh, in the 22-year. I'm actually looking at a study from the previous year. So then lastly, um, in this very quick overview, um, you also, it comes with a, uh, public-facing Find My School, or My School Locator, uh, function. This can be embedded or, uh, linked to from your website. A, a parent or someone moving to your area would enter their address. Uh, that then would put that address, uh, that has a little icon at that, that address. You confirm it, and it tells you the, uh, elementary, middle, and high that, that address is zoned to. So it's a nice way to deploy this information, or get this information out to the community. They can turn the boundaries on or off. You can control and customize what, uh, each site says. So this is all customizable. There's a school, uh, website. You can put it there. And it does give you driving, uh, cycling, or walking directions from that address you entered to the school. So, one of our, uh, a lot of our customers really love this. Uh, really helps, uh, people evaluate, you know, what they're moving, where they might like to move to, and what schools they may be zoned to. So that's a very quick, high-level overview. Uh, there's obviously a lot to this. It's really robust. But let me pause there, um, and see if I could, if there's any questions that have come up from this, or if I can answer any questions.
Ron, one thing, um, before we open it up to questions, can you speak to the demographers we have on staff and where the new housing developments and that, how that information gets, gets into predictive enrollment analytics?
Absolutely. So this, uh, let me bring up this report again. So we actually have a team of researchers, and what they will do on behalf of our, our customers is they will do all the network, and they will talk to the planning agencies, the counties, city municipalities, and the developers themselves. And they gather this all as a service, as part of the, the solution. So they do that on an ongoing basis. Um, every year, they'll be getting that up, uh, data updated. So, you know, real estate is, by definition, does have ups and downs, and it fluctuates. So every year, you get an update. So if this East Vincent Development Company gets pushed out, that then gets updated, the new projections reflect that new reality. So our team will do that. You can look at your projections both with and without the new housing impact. So you're able to view the projections and get a good sense of what that actual impact from the new housing is. Did that work, Joel?
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it.
So that was my question I was going to get to. So you must have been reading my mind.
I also played the saxophone, too. Alto and tenor. I like it.
There you go. Okay. So you're gonna use our data out of eSchool, where we know all our kids are and their addresses and all of that. And then you bring in this other data where the team studies what's being built and what's under development, and the timeline for when the homes and the types of homes are coming up. Is that, I understood that, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and this is the same company that provides eSchool Plus to you as well.
Yeah, okay. The, um, I wanna do this. I cheated and turned my microphone on so I could hear him through my computer. So I'm just turning that off now.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, yes, we've been using eSchool for a while. And you said there's three other applications you're gonna be showing?
Uh, not, not this evening, but Friday, we're meeting with Mr. Sobchak.
Could you put that screen back up of all the different pieces that we have with eSchool?
Yeah, absolutely. Give us just a second. We're gonna share our screen. Thank you, Ron, for unsharing yours.
Thank you, Ron.
And we want the PowerPoint. There we go. And, share it, okay. Got it. Share screen. Share. And, present. F5, cool. Oh, yep. There, uh, advance it to the right slide. There we go.
Okay, so right now, we're doing, on the, on the left, right, SIS enrollment. And the predictive enrollment is another piece that you were going, were looking at tonight.
Yes, ma'am. I, I apologize. I didn't, um, make it explicitly clear. The highlighted yellow lines are what you currently use today.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
Um, 'cause we have Performance Manor, uh, Matters.
Yes.
And Naviance.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure about applicant tracking, but I believe that we do that. Okay, so what are the other ones you're gonna show on Friday, on this picture?
On Friday, we are actually looking at, uh, your eSchool Plus Student Information System, because Power School actually, uh, provides four different student information systems. So we're exploring what a potential move to what's called Power School Cis.
Okay.
Would look like.
Okay.
And then we are also looking at Schoology, our learning management system. And we're also taking a look at, to the far-right, Unified Insights, which provides analytics on those big-picture type of district initiatives. Things around MTSS, risk analysis, um, utilization of that Schoology Learning Management System, those types of items.
So it's almost like a, an enterprise system, in some ways, of connecting all the different pieces. Okay.
Essentially, Power School aims to be a one-stop shop for our, our districts. Everything up on that list is ace, is able to stand alone on its own. Uh, there are fully baked applications, um, so you can do as little or as many. Of course, you get more bang for your buck with, the more you add the real-time integration, uh, between the different applications. But yes, anything up there can be added by itself.
So the enrollment analytics is important to us right now because of the facility study we're doing, right, gentlemen? So, you're gonna jump in on that one?
Yes, which is part of, part of my question. If somebody from the administrative side can, can give us the 30,000-foot view as to all the expected ways that this platform will be used from all the multi-different levels. I, I saw the presentation. I just don't think I'm clear on, on the connection. So if somebody from the admin side can help me on the connection, that, that might paint a little more clearer picture for me.
So how this would be used?
Right.
Or what initiatives?
But I mean, I mean specifically to what we as the district are looking to, the boxes we're looking to check on, on multiple different layer, levels with this. And I, I think I understand from the presentation, the boundaries and that kinda stuff. But now into Mrs. Mills' question, that has shifted to a different side. So I, I just don't have a clear picture as to connecting all these dots we just collected in this presentation.
Go ahead.
So, so anybody who has the answer.
So this, this, this is the system that we're already using. Um, and I think the only reason this evening that they're here is for this specific piece, which is gonna assist with the master facility planning and basically identifying the areas where there might be high enrollment. Um, I was actually, one of the, I do have a question. But, um, one of the things that we discussed, Brandon, as we, we went through that process, if you remember, I presented a couple different scenarios as we moved forward. Um, but one of the difficulties was getting an accurate, um, account of buildings, construction that's occurring in the area, what the influx of students may be, but also just moving and re, um, locating students if we were to, this was not discussed. And I'm not saying that we're doing this, but if we were to close a school, right? So this software is to assist us with that process, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And Power School does offer, uh, consulting services as far as sharing these results as well. So if you would partner with Power School for this, this offering, then we can bring someone out here to present on your data, on your system, and what, you know, any boundary changes would look like, you know, down to neighborhoods and things along those lines.
All the things that he did quick. All the things that he did quick. You would do for us.
All the things that he did quick, we could do with your data, you know, presenting as, as a third party, you know, uh, an outside, you know, uh, organization, if you will, presenting the findings of how these, how potential boundary changes could look if you were looking to add schools, close schools, change grade levels, configurations, all of those types of things.
So when we went through this process, and the board that, uh, I think was Andy, Brandon, and, and Rob were a part of this, one of the biggest barriers that we encountered, but it was a good barrier, uh, barrier was the fact that we're trying to bring programming back into the district, specialized programming for our students with disabilities. And what we noticed is, while the occupancy of a building may say 500 students, we may have allotted three classrooms for specialized programming where they're not gonna be utilized. Can your program take that in, is there a formula, or can your program take that into account when we're, we're looking and predicting out, and maybe doing construction of a building? Can it take into account where we're saying, okay, we have five specialized programs that we're gonna be using? So while the enrollment prediction might be, or the, the capability of housing 500 students is accurate, but because we're with, taking five classrooms away for specialized programming, can there, is the program able to assist with that?
Sure. Ron, I'll let you take that one. Um, but in addition, I will add that there's also a staffing calculator that Ron didn't show, that you can plug in your student-to-teacher ratio, and, and that will, uh, that will give you, give you those figures. But Ron, I'll let you take that one. Did you hear everything?
Yes, I did. And, and absolutely. So we do have some calculators that are built into the platform that can help calculate capacity. So if you wanted to reduce class sizes, et cetera. We do need from staff, it, we need the number of classrooms available for instruction. So I think that the spirit of your question is, if classrooms are being repurposed or, or used in a different way, how do we get that data? That is something that we would need, uh, from, from the, uh, from, from you. But what we could do is, the tools that are built in, it allows you to look at all kinds of different scenarios. So if we wanted to do two classrooms at a site, what would that mean for your capacities? This system also allows you to have different capacity values at different points in time. So that report I showed you earlier, we had the capacities going all the way out. If a site was going to be modified, let's say, three years from now, and it resulted in more classroom or more instructional space, then you could have a different capacity. And there is a, a report that'll say, you just wanted to say, which are my sites that have a, a lot of excess capacity, or which one of my sites have, uh, potentially are gonna run out of capacity? You can drill into that and find that really easily. And then lastly, just to mention what Joel mentioned, um, the staffing calculator takes your by-school, by-grade projections, and it pulls it into a, a tool that you can then, uh, do a similar exercise where you can say, well, we're going to load classrooms at a certain level. It'll then calculate and crunch the numbers and tell you exactly how many teachers you'll need. And you can do that for the next immediate year or any point in the 10-year time horizon. So, as you're having conversations around, like, three, five years from now, what does our, our staffing levels need to look like? There's a lot of robust tools in there to help, uh, really, you know, drill into that data.
So I have a follow-up to that. So you, you mentioned two, two things, like consulting, I think I heard you, and there was something else as a response to Mr. Palia's question. And then, th- this last response, my question is, those three items.
Okay.
Is that, are those things baked into the price that is in this presentation that the committee will be moving to full board? Or is that additional services that are not baked? Or is that additional services that are not baked into this dollar amount?
Yeah, absolutely. So the proposal that, uh, is attached, um, that is including the setup configuration, the training, everything along those lines, and a subscription to the service. Uh, in addition to the support that would be ongoing, uh, just like any other Power School application, the things that are not, uh, included there would be, uh, build on time and materials, such as bringing someone here to present the findings of, you know, a, a boundary change study, something along those lines. Ron, anything to add to that?
Yeah, so the, the, the support for this platform is all included, and when, so we, we differentiate between consulting and support when, really, the dividing line is if you want us to create an additional work product. So what that would look like is, we want to hand to the consultant, say, these are our objectives, this is what we're trying to achieve, now create some boundary scenarios that work based on our goals. That would be creating additional, uh, work product and additional, um, scenarios for you that are not normally included. That's all done on a, uh, time and materials basis. It's really only what you need, and we work directly with staff typically on this, to, to just do the work that your district needs. Um, but from terms of support that is included, which is the regular every day, that can be anything from, we're trying to do something in the platform, we need someone to walk us through it, we want to talk to one of the analysts, um, and get an understanding of why, you know, why you're projecting a certain way, all of that part is included. So hopefully that, uh, answered your question and added some clarity.
I'm still not sure I'm any more clear now than I was five minutes ago.
Does, does that mean, we, we get all the data back, but then we have to interpret it ourselves, or we have an additional cost?
That would be included.
So the interpretation of the data is included?
The interpretative, that would be, we want someone, uh, so yes, let me clarify. If you wanted us to present on the findings for the regular scope of work, that is included. If you wanted someone to create new boundary scenarios for you, that is extra. Does that make sense?
So if we're re, if we're redoing our boundaries, that's an additional cost. But if you give, if we give you the boundaries that we currently have, and, and you take that data, you'll allow us to, you'll be able to tell us what enrollment will be like in a year or two, based on the construction that's going on in those areas?
Correct. And now, I should note, the system is designed that if, if you wanted to move the lines and do some cursor analysis, or we've had customers do the complete boundary modification internally, the platform is designed to, to help with that, and our team will support with that. But in the, in the circumstance that Joel mentioned, where you want to have the whole, uh, effort handed off to a third-party consultant, that is extra. In terms of the annualized enrollment projections that we produce, if you would like someone to present on those findings, that is included.
So I'm going to make a comment, and then I, I do have a question that'll be in, in, at the end. So I understand the value proposition in using this type of software. My concern is the cost associated with the program at a time where it's not necessary right now, from my understanding. Uh, our, our, Master Facilities Plan Committee has not even met. It was just finalized. So we're looking at probably, from a timeline perspective, eight to 12 months before we even start to have serious conversations about redrawing boundaries and having a better plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Palia, on that timeline. So my concern is the initial cost of that $12,000. What are we getting, what's our utilization of the data collection during that time period when we really don't have a clear plan and expectation for implementation of that data? Essentially, we're collecting data to sit there at a cost of $12,090.68. And then the second component of this is, again, this is my interpretation, to me, this master facilities boundary discussion, when we get to that point, if that's a necessary outcome of that, to me, is a one-time expense. It's not something that there needs to be a recurring annualized fee associated with that data collection. I, I can't imagine that, at least during the time that I'll be on this board, that every year, we're looking at redrawing boundaries. If that's the case, then we've got some, some serious problems. So my, my other concern is, from a value proposition, looking at this cost structure, is what's the necessity of ha- having an annualized implementation cost and data collection cost for the uplift of, on an annual cost of $16,165.19? Essentially, we're paying for something that we may not entirely utilize, given our approach for our master facilities plan.
I think the only reason why we don't do this is because we don't have anything like this. So we've been very manual for a while. Um, and, you know, on how we look, look at enrollment, and we're placing kids in rooms. So in my mind, um, I know the master facilities plan is a little out there, but this, this gives you time to, um, get comfortable with it, understand, and better understand our moving population and what's going on in our district. And I think I heard Ron talking about, it also helps then also, because we're kind of manually doing, um, how many teachers we need at a grade level and stuff like that, right? So this will help with that, because it's using all of our eSchool data.
We are manually doing that. That's not a heavy lift, though.
Okay.
That piece, that part is not a heavy lift.
Okay.
Redoing boundaries in the future would be a heavy lift.
Okay.
So Ms. Mills, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. The manual, manualization of the process is something that's very time-consuming, um, and outside of what Mr. Palia just mentioned. But my, my concern is that eight to 12 months before we have a clear plan for discussion of, let's say, worst-case scenario, redrawing boundaries with the closure of a facility or two, then you're looking at another year before that's implemented. So your timeline is about 18 months from today's date, before you really have serious implementation of any facility changes. During that time, we would have accrued a cost of over $20,000 for data that we not, aren't necessarily utilizing. Right? I look at this as something that is centrally focused, and the most cost benefit of doing this is for analyzing redrawing boundaries. If we have to align with a master facilities plan that requires that to be done. To me, I don't see the cost benefit of paying for this now. I'd rather use it as a one-time implementation at the time when those decisions need to be made, so we have data to support those decisions. I, for one, am not interested in paying for the next 18 to 24 months for system data that we may or may not use, but we're scraping the surface of what the capabilities are. Right? It's kind of like paying for a cellphone plan that you get 1,000 minutes, but you only use 100 minutes every month. That, that's, that's my interpret, uh, interpretive. I'm not saying it's not necessary. I don't know if it's necessary right now. If there's, if there's another, if somebody can give me a strong use case to justify the costs associated with this for an immediate implementation of October 1st, then I'm open to, to, to changing my mind. But the way I see it right now, in terms of master facilities plan, we shouldn't even be having a conversation at closing buildings, because our committee hasn't even met yet for the first time. I think those conversations need to happen with our community, with our staff, with our, with our taxpayers and our stakeholders, before we even start to have a conversation about spending money on redrawing boundaries. That's, I think there is a value add in using this software. I just don't think we're at that time and place right now.
So I, I pleasantly disagree with you, um, in this sense, because I know, in my mind, when you have this kind of data, you can work the scenarios out in advance. I'm more comfortable work, and this is just my style, working out the scenarios in advance, rather than waiting for a time and a year and a half out. Because the minute we start having conversations in the community, those topics are going to come up. And with some data, and looking at the data, you can help inform the conversation so, um, people are understanding. You hear what I'm, can, am I being clear here?
I'm, I'm picking up what you're putting down, but I, I don't think that you can start to draw conclusions unless you have a better understanding of the path it takes to get there. So I, I can, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I respect that. That's why I think this, 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 in, this, the implementation of a program such as this isn't, excuse me, is important for this district, but again, I don't know that it's right now. There should not be any conversations about which buildings we're closing as it stands right now. Right? Because we don't know what that looks like. We don't know what our enrollment will be next year. I know that there's predictive enrollment here, but we also don't know what, what impact that's going to have with our neighboring charter schools. We have so many moving parts with their education and improving the educational offerings in the classroom, that six months from now, enrollment can be in a much different place than it is right now. So, I, I, again, I, I, I understand the importance of the program. I just, I, I don't know that I agree that right now is the time and place to do that. So I'd rather at least meet once, or twice, or three or four times with our, with our committee, to better understand where our stakeholders are and where our staff is, based off of the information that'll be provided at those, those sessions, and then come back and revisit this. But in the interim, I can't vote yes to paying for something that we don't have a clear direction on utilization.
So Joel, what, what's the turnaround? Because, I mean, Andy brings up a good point, and, but let's say we ramped it up, and in six months, we want, and we need this.
Sure.
What's the turnaround if we, if we move faster than we anticipate the eight to 12 months? How long would it take to get this up and running for the school district?
Yeah, Ron, I'll let you take second. Um, but on screen, there is the four-step process that we go through, and ultimately, we could have you up and running in six weeks.
That's taking the eSchool data. And what about all that research stuff that you talked about? That's already done because you've been working in Chester County?
No, so the, the six weeks, we get the platform up and running, and then it depends on the time of year, um, but it could be slightly longer than that. Uh, there is some seasonality to this, so.
Right.
Um, we, generally, we don't do a lot of new projections in the June, July, August timeframe, because what we need is your students to return to school and then get that data. So, um, we do, you know, we have done that in the past. We don't recommend it. Uh, generally, it's your schools, you have to open, they have to get that data in, um, and so the fall is our, is our busy timeframe. So, um, you know, this, the implementation, the, the research and the enrollment projection work happen concurrently with the implementation. So once we start, our teams will start that research. Sometimes we can complete it in six to eight weeks, sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Um, but all of our annual customers will get all their projections in the fall timeframe.
I think I'm inclined to, uh, agree with Mr. Finkbonner. I think it's something that we should, uh, put a pin in for now, and maybe consider it down the road, um, after we have, um, initially met with our community members of our master facilities community. Because, um, hearing from them, I mean, this is going to be, you know, based, we're going to be spending, you know, taxpayers' money, and we want to make sure that we at least have a meeting or a, you know, a few meetings in, under our belts before we, um, put our hand down and say, yes, this is what we want to do.
So procedure leaders, two ways we can handle this. One, it does not get passed through the committee. Um, and if it does, um, then, uh, we can make a, uh, honor additions, deletions, and modifications. If we're not ready to do that, uh, we can remove it from the agenda, or we can take a roll call vote. So, um, there's, there's, you know, there's direction. I hear, I hear both sides. Um, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Finkbonner that this is going to be something that's going to suit us down the road. I'm just not sure that right now is that opportunity. Uh, but then again, I hear Ms. Mills, too, because those discussions are going to start soon, and within those discussions are going to be a lot of what-ifs.
Right.
And then, and we can plug in some of those what-ifs. But, uh, considering that the committees have not even met for the first time yet, um, I would be inclined to suggest that, uh, that we, uh, just, uh, pull this off the regular agenda until we've had time to have some more conversation. A key member of our team, Dr. Dunlap, is not even here tonight to weigh in. Um, so I, I, I think that that would, uh, be helpful. And, and no disrespect, uh, Mr. Palia, because you've.
This is my first time joining this program, so I'm not taking.
You, you've handled it well. But, but again, I, I, I know that Dr. Dunlap has had experience going through this kind of thing in another school district and using software like this, so, um, I guess what I'm looking to do is, is if everybody's inclined, the easiest way to do it is just not to, uh, pass it on to the full board, and then we'll have some more discussion, or we can pass it on to the full board, um, and then just delete it from the, uh, regular board meeting agenda this evening.
I see from, from the cost structure, um, in, in the, the motion, that there's a proration of the cost. So what I personally would like to do and ask of Dr. Dunlap when he returns is, in 90 days from now, in three months, uh, have, at one of our committee meetings, have a revisit of the progress that's been made in those master facilities plans committee, committee meetings, understanding what the direction of our community, our stakeholders, and the participants in there are. And at that time, if we need to revisit, as long as the cost structure is prohibitive to allow us to continue to, dollars as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? See none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter D, donation from Dick's Sporting Goods to Boys Lacrosse Team. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, approve the $6,000 donation from Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation to support the startup of the Coatesville Area School District Boys Middle School Lacrosse Program, grades seven to eight, as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just, uh, thanks, thank you to Dick's Sporting Goods for the generous donation for the startup of that program. Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter E, CRES grant for extracurricular summer youth program in K-8 youth camps. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, accept the CRES Educational and Behavioral Health Sciences grant in the amount of $9,000 to be used by the district's Athletics and Activities Office. The purpose of the grant is to assist in funding some summer program positions within the Coatesville Area School District in an effort to focus on goal number two related to the Board approved 2021 Athletics and Co-curricular Activity Strategic Plan as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I will, uh, I will thank Mr. Kelly, um, and the CRES group for their gracious grant. We'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter F, Nextdoor Girls Night in the Park donation of backpacks and school supplies. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, ratify the donation from Nextdoor Girls Night in the Park of backpacks and school supplies worth approximately $1,890 for all elementary schools in the district as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much for the donation, and we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter G, Power School Predictive Enrollment Analytics. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, approve the license and subscription fees for the Power School Predictive Enrollment Analytics for an initial term from October 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023, at a cost of $12,090.68, and an annual ongoing fee as of July 1st, 2023, subject to an annual uplift at an estimated cost of $16,165.19 as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I think we pretty much covered questions and comments. We'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Letter H, Lear and K Photography, donation of yearbook team photos. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, approve the donation from Lear and K Photography of middle school team photos, seventh and eighth grade sports, to the North Brandywine and Eight-Nine Centers Yearbook, as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much for the donation, and we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter I, Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF Funding Commitment Decision Letter, 202208978. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, approve the funding commitment from USAC, also known as the Universal Science Administrative Company, totaling $320,000, sorry, $320,760 to cover unlimited data costs, uh, data service costs on 1,500 hotspots through June 30th, 2023, as part of the Emergency Connectivity Fund as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? See none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter J, Emergency Connectivity Fund Funding Commitment Decision Letter, 200209082. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors, accept the funding commitment from USAC, also known as the Universal Science Administrative Company, totaling $387,000 for 1,500 Chromebooks as part of the Emergency Connectivity Fund as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? See none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. E-Rate Letter of Authorization and Professional Consulting Agreement, Vanstream Consulting, LLC. E-Rate Letter of Authorization and Professional Consulting Agreement, Vanstream Consulting LLC. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the E-Rate Letter of Authorization and the renewal of the professional services agreement with Vanstream Consulting LLC to continue with consulting services for E-Rate applications at an annual rate of $7,000 for Category 1 and $3,000 plus 3% of funding commitment amount, not to exceed $15,000 for Category 2 as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter L, Navigate 360. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the purchase of Navigate 360 for a 36-month term, beginning on 9/15/2022 and ending on 9/14/2025, at an annual cost of $27,630.60 with an additional one-time cost of $7,982.70 for a three-year total cost of $90,793.50. Navigate 360 products under the contract will include cloud-based district access to Navigate 360's emergency management suite, behavioral threat and suicide case management, and Navigate 360 visitor management as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Roan, just as a clarifier, when you mentioned earlier about the VMS, is this in reference to the VMS?
Yes.
Okay, that you were looking for the, the pass to find a way to communicate?
Yeah, it was the EMS, not the VMS.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. We'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter M, Adult Meal Prices for 2022-2023 School Year. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve a 25-cent increase in the breakfast and lunch prices for adults, staff, and non-students for the 2022-2023 school year. This will set the new adult breakfast price at $2.50 and the new adult lunch price at $4.25 in accordance with the United States Department of Agricultural, FNS Instruction 782-5, Revision 1. Students will continue to receive meals at no charge. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I just want to reiterate that last question, that last line on that, because there has been questions that I, at least as a board member, have received, that students will continue to receive meals at no charge. We'll call, uh, Ms. Stephen, I'm not missing anything on that. Is that correct? I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that is correct.
Save you and your department some emails, maybe. Thank you. We'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter N, Updated Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Coatesville Area Federation of Educational Employees. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Ratify and approve the revised complete collective bargaining agreement between the school district and the Coatesville Area Federation of Educational Employees as presented. This updated agreement includes Section 6.11.9 for the carryover payment of vacation, which was not included in the document approved August 30th, 2022. The President and Secretary are hereby authorized to execute the agreement, and the interim superintendent shall ensure that is posted on the district's website. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter O, 2022-2023 Renewal of Curriculum Writers. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the 2022-2023 renewal of curriculum writers at a rate of $33 per hour as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter P, 2022-2023 Renewal of Homebound Instructors. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the 2022-2023 renewal of curriculum writers at a rate of $33 per hour. It looks like that may be a typo. Stephen, it looks like it's, maybe it should say renewal of homebound instructors? Okay. So I'll read a motion, a modified motion to state the homebound instructors, and can you confirm the rate in which that they would be at? It is correct. Okay, thank you. So I'll revise the recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the 2022-2023 renewal of homebound instructors at a rate of $33 per hour as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter Q, Human Resources Report. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the resignations, appointments, new positions, leave of absence, transfers, changes, status, and corrections as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Letter R, Human Resources Report Addendum. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the resignations, appointments, new positions, leave of absence, transfers, changes, status, and corrections as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We have no informational items. Any old business? Any new business? And we have two public comments. First up is Lori Shannon Bailey.
Good evening. Just wanted to point out the increase in the legal fees. As, as of today, we're looking at $129,853,000. Just a reminder of the commitment that the board has made to provide mental health support staff. I believe there was a commitment to hire climate coaches and, of course, additional social workers. And with regards to the situation that happened on the bus yesterday, there is a dire need to support our students. We know that we are a low-wealth community. We know that we have high poverty in this community that's probably increasing. So please, please do consider the need to support our students. The money won't last long, and if we can continue to look at how we can invest it in our students, that would be a great thing. Thank you very much.
And Josh Young and Mark Evans.
Just wanted to, again, thank the board for their support for our tax incentive program. We're continuing to work hard, and we're off to the county next to, to get their approval, which has already been underway. We were just waiting on, on this vote to do that. And then Mark and I will be reaching out to the, the Economic Development Council to begin processes to redevelop our, our commercial corridor.
I wanted, just wanted to add on to that, too. Yes. Thanks for going through this process with us and being so willing to, to look at it. I just want to confirm that what the resolution passed is what we presented with no further restrictions. Is that correct?
So it passed through our committee, and it'll go into our special board meeting, and then the entire board will vote on that after we're done our committees tonight.
Wonderful. So that'll be tonight, and we'll, we stick around for that, too, right?
That'll be the one where
That'll be under the regular board meeting here.
You're stuck with us for the rest of the night.
Or you're stuck with us, one or the other. Depends on how you look at it.
I love seeing education and how it works, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, very quickly, nice job on Cal Day in the Park. I had the opportunity to be down there on Saturday. Nice community event. Good job.
Abby Swan does incredible work. All the kudos go to her. But it was a wonderful day.
Thank you. Thank you for, for Lori as well for a public comment. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 11, 2022, and I'll call for adjournment at, of the Finance Committee, 8:19 PM.
Okay, moving forward, let's do this. Mr. Roan had to step out quickly. He will be back soon. Ms. Harland, not that your agenda is jam-packed, but why don't we move on to policy that'll buy Mr. Roan a couple minutes, and if he's not here, we'll move forward without him.
Okay, sounds good. I'd like to call to order the Policy Committee Meeting at 8:20. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Approval, uh, recommended action is approval of the August 9th, 2022 Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. There's no presentation, agenda items. There are five informational items. They are the ARs that go along with the policies. There's no old business, new business. Mr. Palai, is there any public comment?
No, I mean, did you want, if there are any questions on the A dollars?
Is there any public comment?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Next meeting is Tuesday, October 11, 2022. I will ask for adjournment at 8:21.
See how that worked out, Mrs. Harland?
It did.
All right. Thank you. I will call to order the Operations Committee at 8:21. At 8:21. Approval of the, sorry, get my computer catch up here. Here we go. Uh, motion, uh, recommended action, approval of the August 9th, 2022 Operations Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Call for a vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. No presentations. We will move into agenda items. Agenda item A, Administration Building Front Glass Door Repair. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the proposal from Advanced Door Services for the repair of the front left glass door at the Coatesville Area Administration Building for a cost not to exceed $2,579.95 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Agenda item B, Scott 6th Grade Center Chiller. Recommended action at the Board of School Directors: Approve the proposal for L, sorry, LT Scape's Concrete Construction Company to replace the concrete walkway and drainage at the door number 27 at cash for a cost not to exceed $19,850 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Roan, you skipped letter B.
I'm sorry.
Scott 6th Grade Center.
I said that, but I read C. Sorry.
I think it was a technology malfunction.
It, it, operator error.
Seven thousand.
I'll go back. Uh, sorry. So let's, let's correct that. Let's go back to read the recommended action for letter B. Uh, that the Board of School Directors approve the proposal for Elliott Lewis Corporation for the replacement of chiller number two control board at the Coatesville Area School District Scott 6th Grade Center for a cost not to exceed $7,980 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now on to C. Uh, I'll reread it. The Board of School Directors, the recommended motion that the Board of School Directors approve the proposal for Concrete Construction Company to replace the concrete walkway and drain system at door number 27 at cash for a cost not to exceed $19,850 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Agenda item, letter D, that the Board, recommended motion that the Board of School Directors ratified a Weaver Landscape estimate dated 8/23/2022 for tree removal slash landscape services at Reeseville Elementary School, estimated at $2,800, and Kings Highway Elementary, estimated at $3,200 for a total cost not to exceed $6,000 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Agenda item, letter E, recommend the motion that the Board of School Directors approve a quote from Wigan Shredding, Inc. to provide mobile purge services, include, including a minimum charge of $165 for the first 65-gallon bin, and each additional bin will be at a cost of $45. Additional services, file removal services, $10 each per bin, $10 per bin for carryout services, uh, not on the ground floor, and $10 per box for box removal as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, and I will just ask or make a statement, and if, maybe if, um, Ms. Stephen, you can clarify just for the public's edification and knowledge that this is documents that are either well past their storage time, uh, so the district is not removing any current or documents that we are required to hold on to or should be holding on to, just so that we're, we're all clear on that. That's true and accurate statement.
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Any others? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Moving on to letter F, the Board of School Directors approve the addendum to extend the existing contract with Environmental Control Services for professional engineering, environmental management consulting, and asbestos control services in connection with the AHERA, AHERA Management Plan. That the current contract ended on June 30th, 2022. This addendum will extend the term of the contract through June 30th, 2025 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. And agenda item, letter G, the Board of School Directors approve the proposal for Signal 88 to provide additional security for cash in the intermediate high school events at a rate of $48.88 per hour. Event officer effective August 23rd, 2022 through August 14th, 2023 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a general question. Hopefully, we can get answered. Is this in addition to, I, I know we use police officers from neighboring municipalities, but would this be in addition to those officers? Or is this to offset the use of our neighboring municipalities for our events?
This is to allow us for more options in case they're not able to provide us services? This just allows us to go out and use their services in place of our local municipality?
Perfect, thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Informational items. Uh, there's been an update to the Navigate 360 quote for Coatesville Area School District. Uh, this originally was approved on June 14th with an effective date of 6/30/2022, ending on 6/29/2025. This is being updated to reflect, uh, an effective date now of August 30th, 2022 through August 29th, 2025. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any public comment? All right, next meeting is Tuesday, October 11th, and I will adjourn operations at 8:29.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Coatesville Area School District School Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Agenda item 1B, purpose of the meeting, excuse me. Purpose of the meeting is to approve the bills payable and any other matters that may come before the board. Agenda item 1C, reading of the mission statement. The mission of the Coatesville Area School District, rich in diversity and committed to excellence, is to create innovative educational experiences which are funded by the taxpayers, supported by the community, delivered by dedicated teachers and administrators to ensure all students will become responsible, contributing global citizens. Agenda item 1D, advisement. By notice of the President, board members are advised that all votes shall be regarded as roll call votes. The minute should also note that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 93 of 1998, Section 1. School board meetings shall proceed in accordance with school board policy. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Rob Fisher.
Here.
Brandon Roan.
Here.
Harval Brown.
Here.
Holly Shearres.
Here.
Andrew Finkbonner.
Here.
Becky Harland.
Here.
Mary Ann Harris.
Here.
Amelia Mills.
Here.
Jennifer Schott.
Here.
Agenda item two, additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda. This evening, I would like to add an additional agenda item. Uh, and I will read that agenda item. First, I will ask for a motion and a second. Um, and then I will explain how we would vote towards that.
Motion.
Second.
Recommended motion that the Board of School Directors approve the Chester County Intermediate Unit, CCIU, to provide professional and clerical services for the selection of a superintendent at no cost to the district with the exception of advertising costs. Now would be the appropriate time for the, motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Before I ask for the vote to have this added, uh, and we would add that under Finance Committee, and it would be Agenda Item N, Madam Secretary.
Got it, thank you.
Before we do, uh, I will take accountability for this. Uh, Dr. Dunlap, uh, as you, I'm sure you can see, is not with us tonight, and he is, uh, out of town. Uh, Dr. Dunlap, uh, as you, I'm sure you can see, is not with us tonight, and he is, uh, out of town for a period of time. And unfortunately, I did not get a cha-chance to connect with Dr. Dunlap to make sure that this was added to this evening's agenda. Um, the, the full board has met with the IU. Um, we have, um, a proposed, uh, schedule for, um, moving forward with the, um, selection of a new superintendent. So at this point in time, we are just approving the use of the Chester County Intermediate Unit, and of course, many, many, um, much more information to follow. Uh, so to my colleagues, a yes vote would mean that you, uh, at this point in time, just agree to use the Chester County Intermediate Unit as our professional and clerical services for the selection of a new superintendent.
Mr. Fisher, can we go back just for clarity? The yes is for it to be added to the agenda, correct?
The, the yes is to add it to the agenda, that is correct.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, call for the vote, please?
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So once again, Madam Secretary, we will add that under Finance Committee, and that will be Agenda Item N.
Thank you.
In addition, um, based on the conversation that we had during the Finance Committee, now would be the appropriate time. I am going to ask for a motion to delete. And bear with me, please, let me, uh, that would be number five, Finance Committee, letter D, Power School Predictive Enrollment, uh, Enrollment Analytics. Uh, again, I will ask for a motion and then a second. Um, we can have additional, uh, questions or comments if necessary. But at that point, if you would vote yes, you are not voting to completely eliminate the choice of Power School Predictive Enrollment Analytics. At this point in time, we are voting to delete it from this evening's agenda and then add it at a further time. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion and/or the voting procedure? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote, please?
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So Madam Secretary, let it note down, we have officially deleted, uh, number five, Finance, Agenda Item D.
Thank you.
Are there any other additions, deletions, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
Mr. Fisher, we didn't do the moment of silence or the bluting of the flag.
Shame on me, Mrs. Harland, and I will go back and, uh, get that, thank you very much.
Sure.
At this time, let's go back to Agenda, uh, Agenda Item F. At this time, if everybody could stand for a moment of silence and they let's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, my apologies for missing that. Agenda item three A, Public Comment on Agenda Items. The Board has requested all persons making comments on Agenda Items to list their name, address, telephone number, and motion item on the sheet provided. There is a three-minute time limit per person. The Board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The Board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. Lauren Shannon Bailey.
Good evening. Um, the comments or the new, the new information added about the new superintendent, um, I was happy to hear that information. Um, I, I don't want to complain about the salary of nine hundred, uh, nine, I think it's over nine hundred dollars a day that we're paying Dr. Dunlap. Um, but I will say, in terms of the CCIU, I recall when they were searching for, for Mr. Hannah. Um, one of the concerns that I had was I, I'm not sure how they put information out when they invited the public, but there were two people who attended the community meeting, maybe there were one or two meetings. But they were, there was a meeting here at Cash, and it was me and one other parent that attended that meeting. And so I would ask that more attention to detail be given to invite the community to that meeting, and basically, they were asking for our feedback. They wanted to know what should they be looking for in a superintendent. And so it's a very, very good, uh, meeting, and it was unfortunate that there were only two people from the entire community that had an opportunity for that. Um, I was really impressed with the music, um, presentation. I do, I do recall the need for, um, communication that the gentleman, um...
Ms. Shannon Bailey, that is not on the agenda this evening.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Speak after if you'd like.
Okay, okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there, but thank you very much.
And one comment on your, on your, on your first comment.
Yes.
Um, that is on the board's radar, and, uh, I can assure you that that will, there will be attention to detail.
Okay, thank you so much.
Moving on to Agenda Item four A, motion items for approval. Recommended motion that the Board of School Directors approve the consent agenda items. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Committee meeting action items considered routine will be enacted under one motion unless removed for separate action upon board request. The purpose of the consolidated motion is to expedite governing board action on all consent items which are not held for discussion. Items that have been held for discussion by the governing board will be enacted upon at the time the item is discussed. Tonight for removal from consent agenda, I would like to remove from consent agenda the following items, under Finance, letter A, Financial Statements. Under Finance, letter B, Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LERTA Resolution, Cowen Township. Agenda item G, Navigate Three-Sixty. Agenda item I, Updated Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Coatesville Area Federation of Educational Employees. Letter L, Human Resources Report. Letter M, Human Resources Report. And in addition to that, letter N, the newly, uh, added recommended motion, the approval of the Chester County Intermediate Unit. Are there any other items to be removed from consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote, please?
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Chairman Finkbonner, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Uh, Financial Statements, Recommended Action, the Board of School Directors approved the Financial Statements, bills payables list as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, please?
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Letter B, Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LERTA Resolution, Cowen Township. Recommended action, the Board of School Directors approve a resolution of the Coatesville Area School District adopting the Local Revitalization Tax Assistance Program for tax exemption of certain deteriorated areas within Cowen Township as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Finkbonner, I removed this from consent agenda so that we could have the proper roll call vote.
Duly noted, thank you. We'll call for a vote?
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Letter G, Navigate Three-Sixty. Recommended action, the Board of School Directors approved the purchase of Navigate Three-Sixty for a thirty-six-month term, beginning on nine fifteen, twenty-twenty-two, and ending on nine fourteen, twenty-twenty-five, at an annual cost of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents, with an additional one-time cost of seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy cents for a three-year total cost of ninety thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Navigate Three-Sixty products, Navigate Three-Sixty products under the contract will include cloud-based district access to Navigate Three-Sixty's emergency management suite, behavioral threat and suicide case management, and Navigate Three-Sixty visitor management as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Did we get a second there?
Second.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, I thought I heard that. Uh, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, please?
Brandon Roan?
Upstate.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris? Motion approved.
Letter I, Updated Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Coatesville Area Federation of Educational Employees. Recommended action, the Board of School Directors ratifying approved the revised Complete Collective Bargaining Agreement between the school district and the Coatesville Area Federation of Educational Employees as presented. This updated agreement includes section six dot eleven dot nine for the carryover payment, overpayment, I'm sorry, carryover and/or payment of vacation, which was not included in the document approved August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The President and Secretary hereby authorized to execute the agreement, and interim superintendent shall ensure that is posted on the district's website. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, again, Mr. Finkbonner, I pulled this from consent so that we could have the appropriate roll call vote.
Duly noted, thank you. We'll call for a vote, please?
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Letter L, Human Resources Report, recommended action, the Board of School Directors approved the resignations, appointments, new positions, leave of absence, transfers, changes status, and corrections as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, please?
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Letter M, Human Resources Report Addendum. Recommended action, the Board of School Directors approved the resignations, appointments, new positions, leave of absence, transfers, changes status, and corrections as presented. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote?
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Letter N, this is the added agenda item, recommended action, the Board of School Directors approved the Chester County Intermediate Unit, CCIU, to provide professional and clerical services for the selection of a superintendent at no cost to the district with the exception of advertising costs. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, please?
Jennifer Schott?
Yes.
Brandon Roan?
Yes.
Andrew Finkbonner?
Yes.
Rob Fisher?
Yes.
Becky Harland?
Yes.
Holly Shearath?
Yes.
Mary Ann Harris?
Yes.
Harval Brown?
Yes.
Amelia Mills?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And I believe that takes care of all the agenda items removed from consent this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item nine A, Public Comment. The Board has requested all persons making comments of public concern to list their name, address, telephone number, and topics on the sheet provided. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Ms. Shannon Bailey?
Good evening. Um, I'd like to know how the district is advertising the upcoming IEP trainings, um, that's starting next week. The first one is on Thursday. Um, we do have, um, I don't have to tell you all, we have a lot of IEPs in the community. Um, and I'm working with two families that have IEPs, and they have not yet been notified of the training, so that's one question. Um, also, when we had the meetings, for those of us that were interested, um, in working with, um, Brenda George, uh, we were led to believe that the community would be invited to, um, um, participate in, um, I guess, scheduling those trainings. Um, and many of us in the community were interested in trauma-informed training as well as ACEs training. And looking at the list of trainings, neither of those are indicated there. So I'm just wondering if somewhere down the line, those trainings would be provided for the community. Um, and then finally, um, unfortunately, I'm still, um, troubled with having some significant communication problems, um, with Ms. Brenda George. I don't mean to call her out, um, but it looks like we have to go to another mediation due to some significant um, communication problems with the student that was adjudicated for a hundred and eighty, uh, days. Um, I did get some information to her, from her today, that contains some significant false information. Um, and so my level of communication will have to be to Director of Special Education and mediation and/or the special education advisor assigned to this district. It's very, very frustrating. Um, this student has been through a lot. Um, he has a court date later this month, and it's very upsetting that we cannot just go through the proper procedures to get his IEP the way it should be. Um, so I just want you all to be aware of, um, my why is to make sure this student gets the support and services that he needs, and unfortunately, that is not happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon Bailey. Moving on to informational items, Agenda Item number ten. Uh, you can see posted there all the ARs that, uh, came through the, uh, Policy Committee this evening. Uh, you can see posted there all the ARs that, uh, came through the, uh, Policy Committee this evening. Before I open the floor for any other informational items from my colleagues this season, this, this season, this evening, I do have an informational item that I would like to read on behalf of the entire Board. I want to speak briefly about an incident that occurred on an afternoon bus run on Monday, September twelfth. We did send a communication to our staff and families about this, both on Monday night and again this morning. Yesterday, around two-thirty PM, a student discharged pepper spray in a contained area on one of our buses. Thankfully, none of our students were seriously injured. The bus driver immediately pulled over and called nine-one-one. Fire, ambulance, and Coatesville Area School District Chief of Police quickly arrived on the scene. Most students remained on the bus throughout the entire incident. EMS evaluated students. Only one complained of respiratory irritation, but refused medical treatment. His parent also signed off on that refusal. A few students were picked up by the parents at the scene. The bus was quickly ventilated and continued on its afternoon route to take students home. We did share all of this information with the Coatesville Area Intermediate High School and high school parents yesterday. We do take this incident seriously, and the student involved will be disciplined in accordance with our discipline policy. Pepper spray simply cannot be discharged on a school bus. We are grateful that no one was injured, and the incident was quickly contained. Unfortunately, two news outlets inaccurately reported that up to fifty students were injured, or fifty students were pepper sprayed. Neither one of them reached out to the district for information or for a comment. We don't know how they derived this information or came to this conclusion. The picture that both of these news outlets conveyed is very different than what actually occurred. This morning, we contacted both news organizations, and they have released revisions and corrections. We wanted to be sure that we clarified all of this and affirmed our commitment to communicate transparently with our community. Thank you. Are there any other informational items this evening? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for adjournment. We will adjourn at eight fifty-one. All right, guys. Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm just repeating myself, but it is just so embarrassing. It's so embarrassing.